Okay, I'd like to start this meeting, please. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Just wanted, for the record, say that Dan Dwyer has been excused from this meeting. And Vice Chair Finley is going to call instead he'd be a couple of minutes late. So he will be coming. And I have no idea what time is. I haven't heard from Tom. Probably traffic, yeah. Okay, announcements. The general election will be held on Tuesday, November 8th, from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. The three polling locations are James Mastercola Upper Elementary School, the Merrimack Middle School, and St. John Newman Church. Please contact the Town Clerk office at (424) 3651, or visit the New Hampshire Secretary of State website to find your specific polling location. If you go to the town website as well, that will, there is a link that will bring you to the Secretary of State. I just, I'm going to take advantage of this recent announcement, just to be able to reinforce to the public to know that, let's make an assumption, it's going to be very busy, there are going to be lines, and there will be traffic. So for all those people who are able to go during the day as compared to early, or around supper time, or after supper time, when many people have to go during that time, I would like to encourage as many people as possible come during the day. You'll probably have less of an issue. But just planning on it being very busy, it's going to be a very busy day, and all of us can't wait till November 9th. November 8th is the actual, just when it's over is all I care. It'll probably be a day or two before we know. Well, in terms of getting all the advertisements and all the other stuff, what positive people we have here. The November and December meetings will be scheduled for the first and third Thursday of each month on the following dates. And these are all regular meetings. Thursday, November 3rd at 7:00 p.m. here in the Matthew Thornton Room, Thursday, November 17th, 7:00 p.m. here in the Matthew Thornton Room, Thursday, December 1st, again here in the Matthew Thornton Room, and Thursday, December 15th at 7:00 p.m., again here in this room. And just for the record, Tom Koenig has entered. That's no problem. Okay, just to let everyone know, I know the council knows, I had sent an email to Diane Tripp at the Town Clerk and to Lynn Christensen about, I guess it was a couple of weeks ago, asking about what's the status of the polling places, were there any issues that have come up, especially in light of the primaries, did we need to change things as a result, were there resources that we needed to provide to assist in the good functioning of the polling? So Lynn is here, and she's going to report on that and respond to any questions we have. So go ahead, Lynn Christensen, who's the moderator.
Just a few fun statistics. We currently have 19,100 and change on the checklist. We are registering new voters at an average of 50 to 75 people per day. You wonder if there's any interest in this election?
Yeah.
Well, there's a good answer for you. We currently have approximately 1,500, thank you, Dan Dwyer, absentee ballots. There are still more coming, there are still more requests coming. The Secretary of State has sent us, so far, 10,000 ballots. I did call today and said, "You are sending more," I believe, and they said, "Let me check." Oh, yeah, we'll have a few more coming. So yes, we're going to be prepared. But Nancy's right, just because we have three polling sites, remember, these are three small polling sites as opposed to one big polling site, there are still going to be lines, there's still going to be traffic. Please check to see where you're supposed to vote, check to make sure that your, the name on the checklist matches the address where you're living now, and you didn't move from Back River Road to Eric Street, and you think you're, just because you moved, that it's going to happen magically, it doesn't. So check those kinds of things.
And don't assume that when you were at the three sites before, you might be at a different site.
Don't assume, because I've always voted here, that you are going to vote here this time. It may not be true. Because the districts have changed from when we used to have three sites. So they are different. So you need to check these things. I have, as far as ballot inspectors are concerned, I have 53 spread amongst the three sites. These are people who sit down with a book in front of them and check you in. They can all hear, they can all read, and the other criteria I insist on is they know the alphabet. So they will be there, they're working two shifts, so we have 53 people working. There's a lot of people that have stepped up. I said, "We need more in order to have the right number of people to even remotely be able to handle the lines." People have come in, they volunteered, they've been great, I can't tell you how wonderful they've been. One new thing that we started doing at the primary that has worked out phenomenally, beyond expectations, is we've assigned one person to be in charge of the ballot inspectors at the polls, so that the moderators don't have to run around and make sure that everybody's eaten, or if they need to take a putty break, that's one of them sits down. So we have that. That worked out just incredibly well. I've got three people that are enthusiastic, they love doing it, they've stepped up, they're making sure that people are covered. If somebody calls in sick, they've got backups, so they're doing just a wonderful job doing that. We have four assistant moderators at each of the locations, in addition to myself, I'll be going between them, but there are four very experienced. I have one brand-new one, I have one that has only worked one election. All the others have been working for eight, 10, 12, 20 years. They know what they're doing. If I'm not there, they know the answers, they know how to fix things, and they know how to make things work. There will be lines coming into the polls. I want to make sure that people understand there are same-day registrations. If you haven't registered yet, you have until Tuesday to do it, otherwise you are going to be standing in a long line waiting to register. If you're in a line outside in the hall, make sure that you're not standing in the same-day registration line when you're already registered. We'll have a moderator standing at the door, kind of reminding people. Also, if you have a Trump hat on, if you have a Clinton t-shirt on, you will have to take it off before you come into the polls. There's no exception, it's not going to be allowed. If you've got a t-shirt on, you've got a choice, you could either go into the bathroom, take it off, put it inside out, and come back, or I have a smock that you can wear so that we can't see what name is on it. You should see, I've got a special one for you, Tom. There is absolutely no campaign material of, I don't care if you're just coming in to vote, you've got to breeze in, breeze out, there is no campaign material in the polling site. That's for any, there is no campaign information, names of any sort in the polling site. There's one pretty significant change, as far as parking is concerned, the major parking at St. John Newman, at the upper elementary, and at the middle school are for voters only. The camp, the election workers have all been given off-site areas to park. Campaign people will not be allowed to park in those spots, that's for voters only. The big change is at the upper elementary school, where we've always allowed the campaign people to stand in those, like, 20 spots that are right there, they're not going to be allowed to do that. They're going to be moved down onto the grass on the corner of Babusak Lake and School Street, just like every other town does. We need those parking spaces for voters, for handicapped, so they're not going to be allowed to stand in the parking lot where they are used to standing. We may go back to it, but for the busy elections, they're not going to be there. I've alerted both, both parties, so they'll let their people know. We've got some good signage for both entrances, and where you go and what you do, and so I think we're fairly well-prepared. But the volume of people coming through is huge, and there's going to be a line, you're going to have to wait, don't forget your license, because if you forget your license, you're going to have to go stand in another line. So have your license ready, passport, whatever you need, but have it ready there. If you can get down to Town Hall to register ahead of time, Tuesday's the cutoff date. If you don't do it by Tuesday, you're going to be waiting in line, another line. And, you know, we've done the best we can with this. We've got a lot of voters in this town. And it's good, because there's a lot of people that will vote, which is wonderful, I have no problem with that. And we'll make it as easy as we can, but we are limited in space, we're limited in parking, we're limited in people, and we're doing the best we can.
I know later we're going to be hearing about proposal, about parking at the middle school, but that's, the chief will be talking about that. Does any of the council have questions? Bill?
Yeah, just a quick question, what's the last day to get an absentee ballot?
The 7th.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay.
If you suddenly get called out of town on Tuesday, your boss comes in and says, "I need you to go to St. Louis, you've got to get on a plane tonight," and it's Monday, you can walk into Town Hall, say, "I need an absentee ballot," fill out the request, they'll hand you the ballot, you fill it out, you hand it back to them, and you're good to go.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Tom?
Can you let us know where the parking places are for foreworkers since we're technically...
Tom, do you need to?
Tom wants to know where he gets to park. He gets to park at St. John Newman, you park behind the church.
Okay.
At the middle school, you park up the hill. At the upper elementary, you park in the elementary school circle. Or at the Legion, or have somebody drop you off and come pick you up later, just not where the voters go.
And the council will decide who's going to be assigned where. We'll talk about that like we did with the primaries.
Sure.
Any other questions? I'm all set as well.
You know how to reach me if you need to.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much. We'll keep our fingers crossed. We'll do the best we can, that's all we can do. We'll do great. Okay, I mentioned that. Okay, POF away, there's really nothing new to report on that, unless someone in the council has something that I don't know about. I'm sorry, Eileen, announcements, I did not give you time.
Okay, the Town of Merrimack invites you to bring your whole family out to Wasserman Park tomorrow night, hopefully the weather's, what's the weather prediction for tomorrow night, good? Yeah. Friday, October 28th, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. to take part in the 24th Annual Halloween Party. This free event features a night of carnival games, face painting, crafts, music, the pumpkin carving challenge, and a highlight from our, of the evening, our costume contest. The annual Halloween Party event is co-sponsored by the Merrimack Parks and Recreation Department and the Merrimack Police Department. So for questions, contact Parks and Recreation Department at (882) 1046. And I think Matt was saying today, Matt Casperius, our Parks and Recreation Director, that we could expect between, anywhere between 600 and 800 people.
Wow, that's exciting.
It really is nice.
Is that how many he had last year, Matt? And if the weather is decent?
Any, is there a rain date?
No, it'll run rain or tide, we just have to move everything in.
Inside, yeah, okay, okay. Halloween night is Monday, October 31st, from 8, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. will be the trick-or-treat hours. The police department will be very visible in the neighborhoods and are asking the motoring public to use caution when driving on the roadways. The fire department wants everyone to remember to change the batteries in their smoke and carbon monoxide detectors when they change their clocks back on November 6th. With the approaching heating season, the fire department wants everyone to remember to clean their wood stove chimneys and have the chimney inspected by a professional before using them this season to prevent possible fires. Thank you.
Thank you, Eileen. Any comments from the press or public, saying there are no recognition, resignations, or retirements, no appointments? Okay, we have a couple of public hearings. Lieutenant Leveque, come on down. Okay, the first public hearing grant acceptance from New Hampshire Office of Highway Safety for the Merrimack Police Department. The town council will hold a public hearing to consider the acceptance and expenditure of a grant in the amount of $13,000 for the Merrimack Police Department made available through New Hampshire Office of Highway Safety for Merrimack District Driving Patrols. So go right ahead.
Evening, Madam Chair, and members of the town council. The item before you, as well as the other grant acceptance are from the highway safety in regards to providing extra patrols to ensure that our roadways are safe, at which point this grant in particular is directed towards distracted driving, negligent driving, use of handheld electronic device while driving, and other distractions in the car. Can also be used for, you know, people that fail to clear the windshields or roofs off the cars during snowstorms. Essentially, it augments our patrol officers who are often quite busy on the road answering calls, and oftentimes, they can't get to the traffic enforcement side of their job, which obviously is very important to the police department, to make sure that our roadways are safe for the residents and, and the members that are commuting through town for business or for commerce. So basically, it would add 54 4-hour patrols between the commuting hours of 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m., and 3:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m.
And this is the first year for this grant?
It's correct, it was, became available towards, a couple months ago, from the federal government.
Okay, I'd like to open the public hearing at 7:18. And I'll hold back the crowds. I'd like to close a public hearing at 7:19 and open it up to the council. Bill?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Lieutenant Leveque, the last paragraph, last sentence of your memo reads, "All three grants," because we can talk about the other two, "require 25% in-kind match or soft match" from the police department. To my recollection, it's the first time I've seen something like this, but if you could refresh my recollection, can you talk a little bit about that?
Yes, the past year was the first time, last year was the first time.
Okay.
Essentially, what we do with that, it's administrative costs, we'll use towards that 25%, patrol vehicle, the usage of the fuel, that goes towards 25%. And a lot of events that we do throughout the year around town, such as the mock accident at the high school, there's numerous amount of hours that go into that and actually keep track of that, and we use those towards a soft match, as well as any other safety talks we might do. A lot of times, our members will go to different driving schools and speak to them, and that's all hours that can be used towards a soft match. So it's basically stuff that we typically do anyways.
Okay, good deal. Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other questions? I'd like to have a final motion for acceptance and expenditure.
Madam Chair, I move that the town council accept and expend of a grant.
Yes, I already did. I opened it at 7:18, closed it at 7:19. That's all. Go ahead, Bill, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Madam Chair, I move that the town council accept and expend the grant in the amount of $13,000 for the Merrimack Police Department made available through the New Hampshire Office of Highway Safety for Merrimack distracted driving patrols to deter, detracted, and negligent driving pursuant to RSA 31:95-B and Charter Article 8:15. Furthermore, that the town manager be authorized to sign any documents necessary to expend the money.
Motion made by Bill Boyd, seconded by Tom Mahan. Any discussion? Singing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All, no opposed. So you weren't here, I'm going to count you after. So that's 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 5-0-0. 20 past 7, 7:21, yeah. Okay, second, public hearing grant acceptance from New Hampshire Office of Highway Safety for MPD. Town council will hold a public hearing to consider the acceptance and expenditure of a grant in the amount of $18,194.40 for the Merrimack Police Department made available through the New Hampshire Office of Highway Safety for Merrimack Step Patrols. Go right ahead, Lieutenant.
Similar to the other grant. This grant is a sustained traffic enforcement program through the highway safety, and this grant allows us to really tailor it to the community's needs. So if we have known problem areas in town during community hours, community hours such as red light violations on 101A, speeding on DW Highway, or other issues that might come up, even school bus violations, a lot of times in the north and south end of DW Highway, we have a lot of school bus violations, this will, to be able, we'll be able to use this grant to tailor that to our needs, where we will be able to put a guy specifically assigned to that traffic enforcement, while other officers are often busy.
Excellent. Okay, I'd like to open this public hearing at 7:21. And the mad rush, 7, close it at 7:22. And let's open it up. I will say one thing, I'll congratulate you on putting in probably questions that Councilman Rothaus would have, because you actually put down how many vehicles you stopped, how many received summons is, how many received warnings, right?
I'm starting to pick up on this.
I said they thought of Finley when they wrote this up.
I do appreciate it.
Questions for the council, Tom, and then Bill?
No, go ahead, I was...
Would this include the do-not-block the intersection like at Continental Boulevard?
Yes, it does.
At 5:00 o'clock in the evening?
Yes, it will.
It's getting worse, because
It is getting worse.
There are more people working to the west, and when they come in there to get on the road.
Correct.
You know, they're, the, how shall I say this? The tension level of those drivers is quite high.
Yes, I would agree.
To get through that intersection.
I would agree. The multiple lights there, we're well aware that, that's a tough area to mark, actually, because it's a lot easier when you have two officers out there
Yeah.
To try to flag them over, and one observes the violation, because you know how congested it is up there. But that's definitely an area that we are aware of and that we could focus us on.
Bill, and then Finley?
No, go ahead, I can defer to Finley.
Actually, I'm just, it's not for tonight, but I'm just thinking that maybe we should talk to, you're talking about Continental and 101A?
No.
No. Well, actually, that happens there, too.
By Burger King, by Burger King.
Actually, there's more red light running at 101A than there is
Kim Sargent and Greeley. Industrial.
Yeah, I was just thinking about talking, both cases would be the state, I believe, on both of those would not be.
The state would be.
They might contemplate looking into the lighting, I don't know if there's
That's been, as long as I've lived in Merrimack, that has been an issue. With the state.
Didn't mean to bring it up right now, I could have found out later, but...
Bill?
I'm good, Madam Chair.
Okay, any other questions? Singing, entertain a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that the town council accept and expend a grant in the amount of $18,194.40 for the Merrimack Police Department made available through the New Hampshire Office of Highway Safety for Merrimack Step Patrols pursuant to RSA 31:95-B and Charter Article 8:15. And furthermore, that the town manager or her proxy be authorized to sign any documents necessary to expend the monies.
Motion made by Bill Boyd, seconded by
Second.
Tom Mahan. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
6-0-0.
Point of order, Madam Chair?
Yeah.
Is it possible to take item number three under new business so that we can?
It's already done.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
So with that objection, move new on business number three, till now, because instead of having Lieutenant Leveque, the chairs up and down.
Appreciate that.
You're very welcome. Grant acceptance from New Hampshire Office of Highway Safety for the Merrimack Police Department to, the town council to consider the acceptance and expenditure of a grant in the amount of $7,182 for the Merrimack Police Department made available through the New Hampshire Office of Highway Safety for Merrimack DWI patrols. Yeah, I wonder what that's about, go ahead.
As you suggest, that this grant is focused on DWI patrols to get the impaired drivers off the roadways. Would fund 26-hour patrols from approximate hours from 9:00 p.m. to 3:00 a.m., predominantly on Thursdays, Fridays, and Saturdays, where we see an increase in those arrests. It also may, may focus on other various events around Super Bowl, St. Patrick's Day, other days that are known to be associated with consumption of alcohol.
Excellent. And this is not a public hearing, so I don't have to do open and closing.
Yeah, that was going to be my question.
Under $10,000.
Oh, okay.
I actually knew that. It's amazing. But I remembered that, I knew the $10,000 mark. Okay, so we just need a motion.
Madam Chair, I move that the town council accept and expend a grant in the amount of $7,182 for the Merrimack Police Department made available through the New Hampshire Office of Highway Safety for Merrimack DWI patrols pursuant to RSA 31:95-B and Charter Article 8:15. Furthermore, that the town manager or her proxy be authorized to sign any documents necessary to expend the monies.
Motion made by Bill Boyd, seconded by Tom Koenig. Quick comment? Yes, go right ahead, Bill.
I just wanted to commend Lieutenant Leveque for the memo. It was really well put together, it was clear, concise, and gave us the information that we need, and like you illustrated, you know, Council Rothaus usually asks for those questions, and it's really nice, was nice to see, I just want to thank you for the work, appreciate it.
It was good information. You're right, Bill. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. 6-0-0. Thank you very much, Lieutenant Leveque.
Thank you.
No, remember, if you stop me someday?
Wait him, you did not say.
Pay for pay.
She did.
Did I pronounce this right, Ma'am?
Leveque.
What did I say? Apple. We better move on. Legislative updates from state reps, don't see any state reps here. Town managers report.
Okay, the Woodspring Suites Hotel has begun site work for their new four-story, 123-room extended stay hotel on Executive Park Drive. The Merrimack Hotel has given permission for the fire department to go ahead and start destructive training within the facility. The training has started this week. The information provided to the fire department is that the property owners hope to start demolition of the building in December with a projection of completion by January 1st, the old Merrimack Hotel. Due to a New Hampshire probate court decision recently, it appears that the 57-unit Melton Elderly Housing Project, which most of you recall
Back to the shoe.
As the YMCA, Manchester YMCA property, may be returning to the planning board for an amendment to their approvals in order to commence with the development of the housing portion of the project at some point in the coming months. The probate, the probate court has released the granite, meaning Manchester YMCA, who is the property owner, of some of the restrictions of the former Reverend Wright trust documents. So more details will be shared as information is submitted from the, from the, yeah, why have a trust, right?
Exactly.
The next thing is, the first phase of the Flatley Multi-Family Project has yet to be signed by the planning board for final approval, and barring revised meeting the conditions of approval or a request for an extension, the site plan for the four of the five multifamily buildings will expire on December 15th. In single-family residential development news, the planning board conditionally approved a 66-lot subdivision on land between Wire Road and Whispering Pines near the Bedford Town Line on October 4th. The project now has 12 months to meet the conditions of approval. Also, the Chestnut Hill Cluster subdivision, 72 clustered lots located near the middle school, has recently submitted revised plans and obtained all their required state permits. The board will likely be signing the plan for final approval in the coming weeks. The Merrimack wastewater treatment plant has been selected by Eversource for an audit under the New Hampshire Waste Water Treatment Facilities to Energy Efficiency Program. Is that good news, or? Okay.
Are we happy?
Yeah, we're happy. Okay. The reconstruction of Natta Cook Boat The reconstruction of Natta Cook Boat Ramp has begun. Access to the lake from Brundage Lane will be limited over the next few weeks while the construction takes place. The LED light project has begun with the audit of existing lights. Installation of the new lights will begin during the week of November seventh. The project will change the town's six-hundred-and-sixty existing lights to new LED streetlights, providing a brighter light while saving on electric costs. The new ambulance is expected to arrive by the end of November and should go in service after the new vehicle training program is completed.
Nice.
Thank you.
Yes, go ahead, Finley.
It's only because it triggered my thought that I've been meaning to ask Eileen the past week. I had somebody asking me a bit more detail on the LED lighting, and the only thing that I understood is that when they do need replacement, we now own those if, when we go to LED. They told me to check, have you check into the, further down the line, the costs associated with not just the head, does any of it count into the conduit for underground wiring and so on? So I don't need that tonight, but it just made me think about it. All right. Because supposedly, there's a lot more to it according to this person who deals in lighting, and so I'm on. I'm just not close enough. I'm sorry.
Oh, Eileen? You didn't have yours on, apparently. Your microphone. Okay.
Oh, Nancy?
Yes, Jackie, sorry.
I'd like to ask Eileen a question, too.
Absolutely, please do.
Is their lifespan a little longer, or not?
Supposed to.
Than regular lights?
Oh, yeah.
Than mercury?
Much longer.
Much longer?
Much longer. Twenty.
Twenty?
There's a ten-year warranty on the lights and a twenty-year expected rest.
So a voice from the audience, just for our home audience, said ten years, a warranty for the light, but expected twenty years. Okay, any other questions of Eileen?
And what is it currently, Kyle? A regular?
I can say it, because we
Regular lights? Oh, because
We just call them
Oh, they replace them? Okay.
They're fairly durable, ten, twelve years probably, because the one outside my house went out a year or two ago, so.
Have you replaced it yet?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, within a week of me calling.
Yeah, me, too.
You know, they just cycled it into the, to the thing, and they took care of it. But I have a question.
Go right ahead, Tom.
McGaw Bridge Road, the bridge, how's that going?
Well, why don't you
How was that? Do you mind if he?
Please come down, Kyle, I'll have to be repeating.
And the reason why I say that is because it didn't make it into my announcements, but it had meant, I had meant to have it on here.
Kyle, Director of DPW is going to answer that question for you. Counselor, Mayhem.
The bridge is nearing completion. We're hoping to get a ribbon-cutting date from the contractor very soon. The final paving of top coat is scheduled for Monday.
Is it on? Is your microphone on?
Yeah, but you gotta turn it.
Turn it up to your mouth?
There you go.
Is that better?
Yes.
Okay, that's better.
We got a thumbs up from the, from the booth.
So the paving of the top coat is scheduled for Monday, and then there's a few other details that need to be done, grinding of the deck joints and stuff, but we expect it to be open within the next few weeks.
Any other questions for Kyle, while he's here? Singa, thank you, Kyle. Okay, let's move on to the agenda, consent agenda. Proposed zoning ordinance amendment, final reading, Town Council to consider the proposed zoning ordinance amendments regarding accessory dwelling units and sign Section 2.02.1 and seventeen as supported and recommended by the planning board pursuant to RSA 675:2 and Charter Article Romanover five.
Move the consent agenda?
Seconded.
Okay, motion made by Tom Koenig, and seconded by Tom Mayhem. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Six zero zero. Okay, old business. Eileen, Town Council to receive an update on my next steps for the highway garage.
Okay, I'm gonna give the intro, and then Paul and Kyle are going to talk a little bit more about it. During the retreat session with the Town Council, one of the topics were, do we want to bring back the highway garage on, to put it on the ballot again? And I think it was decided, the answer was yes, but we felt that you collectively thought that there was more information that was needed. So Paul and Kyle have gotten together and spoken to an architect to augment the information that we already have and give us some options. So with that, take it away, Paul and Kyle.
Great, thank you, Eileen. I'm very happy to be here tonight to talk about the highway garage.
Thrilled.
It remains a glaring need for our department, and we hope to continue the discussion. Where the garage last left off, a couple of years ago, was the town hired an architect, HKT, to develop a needs analysis and kind of a size analysis, and that was done, and that information was used to put the proposal onto the ballot that year. And although it got a majority, it didn't get enough of a majority to warrant the bond that was requested. So now, the process where we're looking to augment what was done by HKT with another firm, the firm being the Turner Group up in Concord, New Hampshire. Most of you are probably familiar with the Turner Group, they've done a number of studies through the years for the town, including the comprehensive facility study they did in two thousand and five for all the town facilities. The proposal they've given us is to take what HKT did for kind of the space needs analysis and take it to the next step, actually develop floor plans, develop concepts of what the outside of the building would look like, what the real building would look like, where it would be sited on the highway garage property, and what the realistic cost would be, not just per square foot cost times the square footage, it would be an actual detailed estimate of cost for the project. So the cost to take it to that standpoint is just about fifty thousand dollars, and that's what we're here to request to move forward with from you tonight.
Now, one of the things, I was involved in the discussions with the previous people as well, one of the things I noticed with this is also, the contract would also include being involved in the plan and getting people who were involved, part of, into making plans, but also to help go forward.
Yes.
To be able to present it to the public, whether it be the Rotary, Chamber of Commerce, public kind of, to be able to represent what it means and be there for questions and kind of help us, kind of support for the project. Is that also included?
That's absolutely correct, and that's one of the things I want to focus on with both the Turner Group and myself, is getting out to public meetings, and we'll meet anywhere, anytime to talk to people, we'll open up the garage like we did last time. We'll host public meetings anywhere, anytime.
I mean, that's part of the process.
Absolutely.
It's the actual designing specifics, and they're gonna come up with three options first?
Right.
And then
And then we'll narrow it down from there.
There'll be a decision down to one.
Correct.
And that's when you'd start. Eileen, did you want to? Oh, okay. You can tell I read it, I'm prepared. Which is kind of nice, you have three options at that point, a decision will be made, and that's the plan that would be.
Right, and I'm glad you mentioned that.
Specified, okay.
One of the reasons we selected this company to work with is they have a proven track record of success locally. They recently completed a maintenance facility for the DOT in Derry, New Hampshire, and right here in Merrimack, just down the road. They designed and the construction's nearly complete on the Penachuk Building. So they've, they've done buildings right in this area, and they're very good at what they do.
Eileen?
I think that I am supportive of this also, and one of the reasons why is because it's very, very, very clear that this, at some point, this highway garage needs a big overhaul. It absolutely does, there's no way around it. And this information that we gather to augment, as Kyle said, the information that we currently had, is really not gonna go stale, or it's not gonna go to waste if you decide that you don't want to put it on the ballot this particular year, you could put it on the following year and that kind of thing. So it just doesn't automatically go away.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Let's say, and this is for only discussion purposes, we said, okay, we want to put it on the, put it on the agenda, ballot, thank you very much, the ballot for April. Is this stuff we would have to do anyway?
Yes.
Okay.
What this does is, it gives the voters quite a bit more to chew on and see what they're getting for their money.
More data.
And it's a much more developed plan than the last time. The last time, it was basically nine thousand square feet of maintenance-based base, a thousand square feet
And a picture.
Janitorial, four thousand square feet of office. That's all the information they had.
Right.
So this will be detailed floor plans, detailed elevations of what the building would look like, and a, and a site plan.
Paul, did you want to add anything before I opened it up?
Yeah, actually, when Kyle and I were talking about this along with Eileen, we started looking at it, and including your package, you saw the debt runout schedule.
Right.
And we have one bond, Greens Pond Land Acquisition, which is ending in August of two thousand and eighteen. At the time, with, if this does pass in April, this will slide in to that bond spot. And I did some debt runout, did some debt analysis for a twenty and a fifteen-year bond, which I'll pass out. Just one of each, there's one on top and one on the bottom. And you'll see that for a twenty-year bond, at what we originally estimated at three-point three million dollars, the cost in the first years, which is the highest year, is two-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand dollars. Currently, Greens Pond Bond is two-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars. So it'll fit nicely in that spot, and then it'll be a slide in, and it won't be a bump in the tax rate. And even if you wanted to do a fifteen-year bond, the first year's two-hundred-and-ninety-one-thousand dollars, which is a little bit more twenty thousand dollars, more, fourteen thousand dollars more, actually, than what's this current year, bond and interest payments. So it kind of fits nice with the schedule, and that's when we're looking at it. The other thing is, is that they have, this Turner Group has, like Kyle said, the Dairy and the Village District, Penachuk, but there's also other facilities that they've worked on in the state, too. They understand the state of New Hampshire, they understand Merrimack's needs because they did that study ten years ago, so when we get them in to look at our old garage, they understand, they already, they already had their foot in the door to look at that. So that's why we're going, we went with the Turner Group for this project. And like Eileen said, if we get the results in December, January, and we don't want to go further, we still have it, and it's needed for the project.
And we already have that money in the CIP, right?
Yes, we already have, actually, we had twenty thousand dollars set aside for last fiscal year, and put some savings that we have in gasoline in this budget and some other things that we have, the thirty thousand dollars, we can come up in the highway department's budget without.
Okay. Jackie?
Yep, I would, first of all, reading through it, the breadth of this company and what they can do is very useful, that they would do even the costs associated with each part of the project, and that they would give us advice on the disposal of the old building, which I thought was very valuable. And I assume there's gonna be public hearings, you said, along the way, that people could input, because I'm thinking that they, people might have ideas about that old building, like taking him down.
Well, it was part of my question.
Yeah. Oh, that's good, that's good. One other thing, did this project go out to bid?
It did. When we hire for professional services, like for the bridge projects, anytime we hire architects, engineers, those kind of professional folks, we solicit based on qualifications, not based on bid price.
Like grant applications require that, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we use the same process for this, for the highway garage as well.
Are they on the state bid list?
There's
So I know in Massachusetts, maybe not in New Hampshire.
There's not a state bid list.
Okay, because if they're on the state bid list in Massachusetts, you can just use it, you don't have to go for comparisons, you can just choose one that's already been pre-approved.
Oh, yeah, okay.
It's not the same in New Hampshire.
The construction portion of this project will go out to bid.
Yeah.
And they will help us
Gotcha.
Go out to bid with the project and their expertise.
Gotcha. Tom, did you?
Oh, I just wanted to say, there is a state bid list.
Okay.
But it's not for this type of, necessarily for this type of service.
I see.
They have different vehicles and trucks
Right.
And all those kinds of things that the state goes out to bid for every year, and we follow along with those.
Yeah, you don't have to go through a longer, okay. Bill, and then Tom, did you have a question, too? And then Finley?
Why do I just?
You didn't, okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Kyle, based on reading the letter from Turner, they said that they would have a deliveral by December fifteenth, which depending on, I mean, it's October twenty-seventh, we're looking at a six-week turnaround, do we think that's reasonable?
It'll actually be later in December, when they wrote that proposal on, a couple weeks ago, on October seventeenth, it was based on that date.
So Six to eight weeks, do you think six to eight weeks is reasonable?
It is, that's what they feel.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Yeah, I would just caution my colleagues about the use of language here, because in this document, under number four, it says, "Work with the town to develop a plan for reuse of the existing DPW garage."
Right.
And then on page two, "We will also work with the town to determine possible uses for the existing DPW garage. We will provide opinions of cost for any upgrades or renovations to the existing building." And this was an integral part of the proposal that we put together the last time, is to try and figure out if there was a way to repurpose or reuse, or renovate, or in some way upgrade the condition of that building, so that we would not have to incur the costs of an entirely new facility to meet whatever needs we decided we were gonna use that particular building for. So, you know, this is one of those things that you, you know, need to, again, as I said, be careful of the language you use, because it gets stuck in people's mind, like the drawing that was put out, that last one, about what this thing's gonna look like.
That's right, and the concept from the HKT study from a few years ago was to repurpose the existing garage as a, as a storage, a vehicle storage building.
Yeah.
And we still believe that's a valid concept, and that would be our hope. It would provide better response time for our trucks in the winter, because they would be preloaded with sand and salt prior to storms. It would keep them out of the weather, it would help the longevity of the vehicles. So there's lots of benefits to keeping the structure if we can, and that'll be our goal.
Sure, if that's possible.
Any other questions? So what do you need from us? Do we need a consensus or a motion, or what?
Yes, I, just like a consensus as to whether or not you feel that this should go forward or not.
Because we'd have to sign a contract.
I, yep, I can, I can sign the contract, so yes, I would like you to
Make a motion.
Do a motion, please.
Would someone like to, is there any other discussion, any opinions, people? I personally support the project. I think it's the, and the pivotal answer I needed was, it's integral, we would have to do this anyway, whenever we were going to build, so to me, it's not wasted money. Either we spend it now and probably not be as prepared to be able to educate the public with the information we have, or wait till later, we're gonna have to pay it later, so that's my... Okay, I'd be, yes, do
To authorize the Town Manager to enter into an agreement with the Turner Group in line with the proposed scope of services that they provided us for the review and development of concepts and plans and information regarding a new highway garage.
Motion made by Tom Mayhem, seconded by
Friendly Amendment, not to exceed fifty thousand, sixty dollars. Fine.
Second.
Tom Koenig, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? None. Six zero zero.
Thank you, Tom.
I'll say sixty, by the way.
So should it be sixty or fifty?
No, no, fifty thousand, sixty dollars.
Oh.
Five zero zero six. Thank you very much.
We're all good.
Thank you. Okay, new business, safety policy submitted by Deputy Finance Director Thomas Boland, so come on down, Tom. And for availability also, to answer any questions, Primex Risk Management Consultant, Phil St. Seer, the Town Council to review and consider the acceptance of the proposed safety policy, which is the Bible-sized handout that is in our packet. Go right ahead, Tom.
All right. Thank you for your time this evening. Um, I'm here in my capacity as?
Uh, check your microphone, make sure it's, push the button on the bottom, it's bright green.
And bring it a little closer.
Sorry about that.
There you go.
There you go.
Does that work?
That works better, thank you.
All right. I'm here in my capacity as acting chairman of the, the town's Joint Loss Management Committee to ask you to approve and accept the town-wide safety policy, of which you've all received a copy. Um, in the way of a little bit of background, the town is required to have a comprehensive written safety policy on file with the Department of Labor pursuant to RSA two eighty-one A. Back in July of two thousand and fourteen, as part of a routine inspection by the Department of Labor of, of the town's facilities, it was noted that we weren't really in compliance with that. We had departments operating on their own safety policies, but we did not have a comprehensive town-wide policy as required by the RSA. So they gave us a, a timeframe of two years to try and develop such a policy that would meet those requirements, um, and the Joint Loss Management Committee in conjunction would be, uh, the town's Human Resources Coordinator, and with Phil at Primex, set about to put that together, and that's what you have in, in front of you, um, is the result of that work, um, which, the final version of which has been signed off on by Primex. We've also received, uh, written approval from the Department of Labor, the same inspector who was out here and noted that, that this was something that needed to be done, has reviewed this document, said that it complies with the RSA, and has given her approval. So, uh, we need to formally adopt it as a town policy, uh, and then make it available to, to all of the department heads and employees of the town. So, uh, with that said, we'd be happy to try and answer any questions that you might have about the, the policy or the process, or, or whatever you'd like to come up about.
Any questions? No, I just have a quick question. It is a large document, obviously, and well done, it's very inclusive. I know it's going to be distributed, but is there any planned education for the various departments, so that the departments know what's in it and how it affects them? Or is it just passing it out? Because passing it out doesn't mean anything. As you deliver to, and maybe that's not you, I'm not sure, Eileen, maybe she answered. Once, if, if this is going to be submitted to a department, there should be some time spent with that department, helping those employees to understand what's in it.
Yeah. It is a good idea, that's something we, the Joint Loss Management Committee can talk about and come up with a, a plan.
And how it affects them.
Right. Uh, we, we do, we do plan to have an employee acknowledgement, uh, form.
But anybody can just sign.
But you can just sign that, right. Um, so I, I think that's an excellent idea, Phil probably has some.
I could also add the fact that the Department of Labor does mandate that, uh, all employees are supposed to know what is in this particular program, so whatever level the department heads can take to instill the training in them, we're there to help as well. Uh, the sign-off sheet does in fact make the employee acknowledge that they're supposed to be aware of what's in there, so.
I have written, understand.
But you're absolutely correct, right. It's a big document.
I mean, it may be that, you know, department heads will just highlight, I mean, because it could go on forever, I understand that timelines, but to highlight these are particularly relevant to our department that you should be aware of, just that. Or if they had a question, they knew where to find it, that kind of thing. Tom?
Yeah, is this, um, applicable to, um, volunteers?
Yes.
It's not in here.
Your volunteers, depending on what they're doing for their scope of work, so if they're being supervised, if there was a committee that was performing some sort of a chore or an assigned task by the town, they would have to follow this particular safety program. Contractors, um, would be falling under the OSHA law.
Okay.
So this is strictly for employees and those assigned by the town.
I've made many annotations in here, I'm not going to subject my colleagues to.
We appreciate that.
Any more pain, okay? So I've made some comments in here, pointed some things out. For instance, you require a valid driver's license. Did you check with our job descriptions to see if we require a valid New Hampshire driver's license? Because if there isn't, then there's a disconnect between the safety policy and the individual's job description. And most places usually specify, a New Ha, a New Hampshire employ, a New Hampshire town usually specifies a New Hampshire driver's license, uh, because there's finagling that goes on sometimes without a state. Massachusetts, Vermont licenses, where they have licenses in both states, even though they're supposed, not supposed to, they do. Uh, and so, oh yeah, I got a valid license, and they pull out one from another state, and your policy says a valid driver's license. He's got the valid driver's license.
Right.
Okay, so it, it limits the, uh, it limits the action you can take to enforce the rules, because you're supposed to have a disciplinary process in here, which is in here. Like I said, without, those are just a couple of, of the, you know, the, the one other thing that's in here is, there's, I, I went back through and looked at the administrative rules. And the administrative rules are, use a lot of terms like should, for like, you know, there should be training. Whoever put this together just lifted that right out of the administrative rule and dropped it in here. I understand you borrowed a couple of other places, and this is the difficulty when you do that, okay? There's, in my, in my opinion, there should be more restrictive language in there.
Shall.
That they will or shall, okay? Rather than should, because should is permissive.
And I can add some clarity to that, Counselor. Um, on, on the licensing issue, um, the, the Department of Labor's guidelines for implementation of safety programs doesn't address licensing.
Right.
Uh, so that may be something that can be separated from here and be part of your policy manual perhaps, uh, so that it doesn't cloud the safety program, that may be an avenue to go, uh, that cleans this document up. And as far as training is concerned, is because when you mandate training, um, not that that's not a bad idea, but I think the word "shall" is, is because the intent is to have people trained, uh, what do you do when people can't show up to that particular training, whether they're on vacation, sick leave, that sort of thing? So it has to be addressed in a more formal manner. So I think the intent of the law "shall" means that they will be trained at some point, uh, because the Department of Labor doesn't mandate within their safety programs, in other words, if, if a new member of your Public Works Department were to be hired, there isn't a mandate that that person has to be trained within a year or something of that particular function, so.
No, no, I understand, I understand that, Phil.
That's, I think that's one of the reasons why that language is maybe a little cloudy, little gray area there.
On purpose.
But, but you can, you can put something in there to clarify that.
You can certainly strengthen it, sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
To do that, and I, and I would, I would suggest that the manager take a look at this and consider doing that, mainly because you're the one that has to deal with the, the arbitration appeals.
And you can also instill on that same pie, um, in the same respect that personal protective equipment, or you can make those as conditions of employment, just like you can mandate the use of seat belts, even though the state statute doesn't require it. So as conditions of employment, you can instill that this training is mandatory, even though perhaps it says "shall" here. Uh, again, you may want to vet out those terms as to, as to how they shake out with the intent of the law. But certainly, um, using the word "is" is a lot more, or "will" is a lot more stringent than "shall." Seems to be a little bit of gray area there, yeah.
May. Finley?
I'm actually a little surprised that Primex doesn't require us to do that training. Um, you know, when, when employees hire, they should know our safety, you know, policy right out of the gate, and I don't know if that's a sit-down of orientation of a few hours to go over all aspects, personnel policy, safety.
When they know, yeah.
You know, the harassment in the workplace, all those other things that go along with it, and, and then if it's all been gone over, and they sign that they understand what they've read in the tests that they took or whatever, however it's set up, then we have some protections, you know, of any type of legal liability, I would think, more so than we have by not offering, by not mandating training, because I think we should. So that might be something to talk about in the future.
Yes, Eileen?
That was the reason why we're putting together a comprehensive plan, because we really didn't have one before. Um, we do go over all those other things, and I'm sure each department, like the Police Department, and the Public Works Department, and the Fire Department, have had, and had their own individual policies that they went over with employees that were driving particular vehicles and, and all that kind of thing. But they were very, you know, sketchy and weak, and that's the reason why, um, the, the Department of Labor a couple of years ago found that we were really.
Too weak.
Too weak and not comprehensive enough. So that's why this plan has been put into place.
Thanks. Any other questions? Okay, I'm open to a motion.
Move to approve the plan, policy.
Seconded.
Motion made by Tom Mayhew, seconded by Bill Boyd. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Sing then, six zero, six zero zero. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Yes, Eileen?
I just wanted sincerely thank Tom Boland for all the work, um, with his committee that they've spent on this particular project. It's taken a long time and a lot of work. And also thank you to Phil, um, and Sharon Marunich, who's our Personnel Lady. So, uh, anyway, my very sincere thanks for all the work that's been put into this, it's very obvious. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Tom, Phil, thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, special event voting, parking management, with Chief Mark Doyle, to enact a traffic management plan with the council's approval, specifically relative to parking restrictions along Babusak Lake Road, McQuestion Road, and Madeline, Madeline Bennett Lane, to prohibit parking during voting hours from seven, seven hundred hours to twenty hundred hours. That's eight PM, right?
That's correct.
On November eighth, two thousand sixteen. And you're going to have pictures and everything else.
As long as our technology cooperates, yes.
And this is to only at, only at the middle school.
That's correct.
There are no considerations for other, okay, fine.
Good, uh, good evening, Madam Chairperson, members of the council, Eileen and Paul, thank you for giving me an opportunity to sit down before you and chat a little bit about the traffic management plan, a special event management plan that I've put together for your review and consideration, in order to accommodate the anticipated traffic volume and limited parking that the Police Department will be challenged with during voting, specifically at the middle school venue, that upon your review, the following traffic management plan will be adopted for that period of time on November eighth, from seven in the morning, one hour before the polls open, till one hour after the polls open at eight PM.
Polls open at seven.
Polls open at seven. Polls open at seven.
So you're going to have it?
Should be zero six hundred then, I apologize. The challenges the Police Department will face with traffic volume will be exacerbated by random parking along access roads. Now, we're not anticipating that there'll be random parking along those access roads, but we've heard all along, up until this point, that there's going to be a very large turnout, and that's a conversation that Diane and I have had, and that Lynn and I have had. We want to make sure that we're putting this plan in place to potentially mitigate it, should there be traffic concerns. And in order to alleviate that, we felt it was appropriate and responsible to put the plan in place to prevent that random parking all in and around that area. Our goal is to provide emergency vehicle access to the venue, with God forbid, we need to get emergency vehicles up there through that major intersection at Babusak Lake Road, McQuestion Road, and Madeline Bennett. And in order to be able to safely provide for access, we're going to make sure that those roadways are clear, at least for those areas that you see that are delineated in red in and around the venue. And I'll specifically state where those areas are as we get a little bit closer to outlining what the traffic management plan really specifies. Uh, it generally should mitigate the impact and keep those roadways clear, those potential hazards associated with parking along those major thoroughfares during that period of time on November eighth. Now, the traffic and parking management plan, uh, will prohibit parking along those sections of the road that are outlined in red. I know most of you are looking over my shoulder that way, but I do have a laser that I can kind of follow along for the folks edification at home. But basically, what we're going to do with this plan, once adopted, is prohibit parking along the following areas, along the north side of Madeline Bennett Lane, from Babusak Lake Road here, at the intersection of Madeline Bennett, along that entire north section, or that north side of Madeline Bennett, all the way up to the cul-de-sac.
So only one side?
Only one side, that we're going to prohibit parking on. And then, again, only on the south side of Madeline Bennett, from that point there to the intersection. And that point there is where the road, if you remember, actually divvies up or divides into two lanes, one for a straight through, which will travel down Babusak Lake Road, and there offers, and it offers a right turn lane. We wanted to prohibit parking along that section of the road just during that period, or that section of the road, so that it prohibits anybody from blocking that right-hand turn lane. So it'll give access not only to the school for emergency access vehicles along that north side of the road, but also provide some parking if there needs to be along the south side of Madeline Bennett, from the cul-de-sac, where the entrance to the, or the driveway to the middle school is. Eastward, all the way to that point where the road, I, I say splits, or that lane is actually added for the right turn lane, and that'll be kept clear to the intersection. It'll also prohibit parking along both the east and west sides of Babusak Lake Road, from the point north of the intersection with Madeline Bennett and McQuestion Roads, to the stream crossover, and that's this section here, from right here at the intersection, north along Babusak Lake Road, to where that stream crosses, roughly about a hundred and fifty yards. And then again, on both sides of the road, from Babusak Lake Road to the entrance to Danbury, and from the entrance to Danbury to that stream crossover, again, keeping that section of the road approaching to and coming from the intersection of Babusak Lake Road free and clear of any traffic. It'll also prohibit traffic from parking along the north and south sides of Babusak Lake Road, from the intersection of Madeline Bennett Lane to the intersections of Jessica and Maidstone Drives, here, all the way from this intersection at Babusak Lake Road and Madeline Bennett, eastward on both the north and south sides of Babusak Lake Road, to the intersection of Jessica and Maidstone. And then along both the eastern and west sides of McQuestion Road, from the intersection of Babusak Lake Road and Madeline Bennett Lane, to the intersection of Merrymeting Drive, right here, both sides of the road, the eastern and west sides of McQuestion Road, toward the intersection at Babusak Lake Road and Madeline Bennett. And then lastly, along the north and south sides of Danbury Drive, from Babusak Lake Road, to the intersection of Madison Lane, here, which is primarily and strictly all residential area right there. So belong both the north and south sides of Danbury Drive, to that intersection of Madison Lane, from Babusak Lake Road. And our goal again is to make sure that while doing this, it'll keep that area right there at that major intersection free and clear. We're going to have a lot of traffic going into the venue and the polling location, a lot of traffic coming out of the venue at that polling location, and we want to make sure that we can get folks in to vote, get them up to park, and get as many people out as quickly and expeditiously as possible. We have at least now planned seven officers at that site alone throughout the entire day, from the time the polls open till the time the polls close. Uh, and we think that having actually run this through, and granted it was a smaller, a much smaller turnout during the primary in September, that, uh, the flow of the traffic plan as we had created it worked very well, and we, that the folks had one way to come in and one way to go out. So there wouldn't be a backup necessarily for, at this particular location, which we knew would be a problem if we allowed it to go normal, right there where the right-hand turn and the parking lot would be, there would be a huge bottleneck, because then we'd have a lot of crossover traffic. What we found out that really did work was when we had cars coming into that location, if that parking lot were full, the primary parking, we could still move cars around the backside of the building, they could park on the, uh, west side of the park, uh, the building here, where there's a lot of available parking, and then more overflow parking up top here, near the field, and there's even a little bit of parking out in the front of the school as well. So we're hopeful, and our officers are going to be strategically placed around that particular venue to make sure that folks are being able to get in, and then can get back out onto Madeline Bennett, and then get back home as quickly as possible, once their voting has been taken care of.
Do you remember how many spaces are there?
A hundred and, geez, you know, when Lynn told me.
Okay, so it's, okay, just a hundred and some.
A hundred and thirty-three, or a hundred and fifty-three is the number that I'm thinking, on that site alone. It doesn't include also.
That's more the St. John Newman, right?
Yeah, actually it is. That also doesn't include this area down here, where everybody knows is Bishop Field.
Field.
Um, notwithstanding the fact that there, it is November and we're not anticipating any snow or craziness, we can still, um, in fairly quick snow or craziness, we can still, um, in fairly quick order, make sure that that becomes a location that we can actually provide for some overflow emergency parking if we need to. And again, we're gonna have volunteers up there as well as our patrol officers, so we'll be able to handle it, I think, in the event that we need to use it. And I think we're gonna use that as kind of that, that fail-safe if we need it.
Finley?
I, I like it, chief. I, and I, I, I'm imagining that it was on purpose that you left the southerly side of Madeline Bennett open for parking because that road is wide enough to accommodate that without any problem. And, but they'll be heading out, they'll park and be able to just leave that way without having to come through and create more of a nightmare. So I, I, I think it's a good idea. And then is it, um, in front of the school, is there enough room as well? It's been a long time now that I'm.
Actually, in front of the school?
Yeah, is, are you allowing parking on that?
There is, there will be parking available, um, not necessarily on the road itself.
Okay.
But I think there's about a dozen parking lots or parking spaces here.
Okay.
That people will be able to use and park. We're gonna try to keep all of the road surfaces clear, so we're not gonna allow, and our officers will be in and around that area. We're not gonna allow people to park on the roads themselves. And I hate to use the words roads, but the, the, the access areas in and around the school. Um, but you brought up a good point, I'm glad you clarified that a little bit. This area here, we're gonna allow for people to park on if in the event that they need to find space to park. And the reason we left that south side open is because it allows for them to just get in their cars and go out. If we allow the north side to be available for parking, then we have a bigger problem, because then we have people getting in their cars, doing three-point, four-point turns in the middle of the road, and that causes a real huge headache for us. But you're right, it is actually, because it was designed for the buses to queue up in the morning or in the afternoons, excuse me, to wait, there's plenty of width there to allow for parking on that side of the road.
Tom, you have a question?
Yeah, I was just wondering where Lynn was gonna have her polling people park?
Right up here.
Is that at Bishop Field or is that?
Nope, right up here. She said on the north side.
Oh, it's in that upper lot that you were talking about being overflow. Might be full already, so.
There are not, I, I'm not sure how many folks that she's gonna have up there, but I know when we worked it in, um, in September, there was, not that we needed it, but there were spots that were available in that location. She did not have that entire parking lot full.
Right, okay.
Any other questions? So we have to need to let you know that this sounds, you, again, you don't need a motion, but consensus from us?
Yes, that's correct. Just to go ahead and approve and enact it for that period of time, from 6:00 in the morning till 8:00 PM.
No, that's absolutely, I just assumed because it was an enforceable situation, it had to be voted on, that's.
I thought it did too.
Do a motion then? Then let's do a motion.
Do a motion, yep.
Okay. I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I move that the town council enact the November 8th, 2016 election traffic management plan, specifically relative to parking restrictions along Babusak Lake Road, McQuestion Road and Madeline Bennett Lane to prohibit parking during the voting hours from 0600 hours to 2000 hours?
8:00 PM, correct.
To 8:00 PM.
Motion made by?
Motion made by Bill Boyd, second by Tom Keeney.
Quick question of the chief.
Go right ahead.
Are we posting signs along those particular roads?
We are, and we have plenty, much the, the same signs that we used for the same traffic management plan protocol that we put in place when the mall opened back in 2012. So we have plenty of signs and plenty of stakes to use. And, uh, my colleague from the public works department hasn't been contacted yet, but he'd be more than happy to help us out put those signs up.
Okay. Thank you, chief, I appreciate it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, yes, Tom.
Just for one other clarification.
Absolutely.
Um, Danbury Road, that seems like a huge amount that you're blocking off there of, effectively, private houses and stuff like that. Why are you going that far out that when you're not going very far down McQuestion and, and things like that?
Well, only because, my only concern with Danbury was, I don't want to inconvenience the residents up here when people are gonna be parking on their front lawns. And I know that, that can be a real irritant for a lot of folks. Um, and again, you're not expecting it to happen, um, but I think, an ounce of prevention's worth a pound of cure in this case. I hate to go knocking on or trying to track people down for the cars that are parked on those lawns and in, maybe ostensibly in front of people's driveways, uh, that have to make the long march all the way up to the middle school because they're parking our issues up there. And again, I'm not anticipating that's going to happen, but I want to make sure that the folks on Danbury Drive at least have the ability to get in and out of their homes as well.
Okay, thank you. Phil?
I was gonna say to, to support, to support the chief, that particular part of Danbury Road, if, I'm, excuse me, of Babusak Lake Road, you go down a little bit and then the road begins to curve up and go up the hill, and that's a pretty, that's a pretty, that's a pretty good slope there. So parking at that particular location there, I think would be also prohibitive as well. So I didn't, I didn't have any objections to it.
Jackie?
Yeah, I, I missed your part about Bishop Field. Is that gonna be open for parking?
It, it's going to be open. Uh, we're not gonna provide it as parking, but folks can certainly be able to park in there. It's just, we want to make sure that, uh, we're not suggesting that it's gonna be a parking area and then have people expect that there's gonna be someone in there to park the cars in there, because it's, as you know, in Bishop Field, it's wide open. There are no spots or spaces and that kind of thing. And if we allow people just to park in there, it can turn into Thunderdome in there and people get really irritated because parked, cars are parked three in front of each other and beside each other, and then it becomes a nightmare. What we want to do is just say, we have it available in the event that it looks like it's gonna be needed for overflow. Uh, there is one entrance in there and our goal is to just blockade it and put a barricade in front of that, uh, that entrance to the area. I don't believe, and I haven't really checked with the MIA, if they're gonna be having any practices or anything in there for SAGA or whatnot. Um, but if it looks like that that's something that's gonna be a problem, again, we have officers that are down there that can certainly regulate. Absolutely, and move folks in there if they need to.
Tom?
Yeah, with that in mind, uh, because of what happened at the high school, you know, during the primary, got there in the morning and it snowed, and there was no markings that you could see, and you got, and your, your officers had one hell of a time trying to sort things out. Could you consider, uh, maybe asking the public works department to have a few people available that they can yank and put down there to direct people or to park?
We're gonna have, and that's a great idea, and I'm sure they'd be able to help us out, and I'll talk to Kyle about that. We're gonna have volunteers there available as well.
Okay. Forgot about that.
And they should be able to assist us if we need to get cars in and or out of there. Um, I, I think we'll be good to go, eh, because of the number of folks that we're gonna have on site, they're gonna be able to move traffic in and around that venue. Um, but I, I'm sure if it looks like we need help, the, the highway department has been great and they've always been there to help us out with signage and otherwise, and I'm sure they'll be able to help us out.
I think the anxiety was high in January, it's gonna be even higher now.
Yeah, and again, I, I can't.
People are just focused on getting into the polls and do something and not exactly where they might park their car or how they might, uh, might do that and, and not think of the issues. And if they do think of the issues, they're gonna say, oh, the heck with them. Okay, uh, I gotta get in there and vote.
I think the takeaway that we've already heard, and it sounds like a broken record, hopefully people are, are taking key note of it, is the fact that it's gonna be a huge turnout. We're expecting a lot of people, uh, at all three locations. And, um, you know, the, the best rule of, of thumb is to go when you don't expect there's gonna be a lot of folks going there, during rush hour, in the morning and the evening, go when there's not gonna be a lot of folks there. And it's easy for us to say, but I mean, when you do understand that and you do understand that there's gonna be backups and that there's gonna be lines getting in and out of these locations, um, we just need to be patient and work through it. It's gonna work, it's gonna happen, it has to happen, but having cooperation from everybody and a little understanding and some patience goes a long, long way. And hopefully with a plan like this in and around that venue, and the reason we're doing it here and not necessarily anywhere else, is because we know we've had it work over here at J News before and it's worked okay. It's been busy, but we've had it work. We've know we've had it work at, uh, St. John Newman, and it's been busy, but we've known it's been able to work down there. This is different, it's a different dynamic, and it's a, it's a fairly heavily traveled area because you've got McQuestion Road, you've got Babusak Lake Road.
Anyway.
Major arteries going to and from the center of town, um, and there's gonna be a lot of people in and around that one location. So we want to make sure that we're just trying to daughterize and cross our Ts and really cover all the bases when it comes to trying to make sure that at the very least we can get our emergency vehicle traffic in there if we need to.
Right. Okay, we've got first and a second, so voting, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, six zero zero.
Chief, thank you very much.
Thank you, chief. We'll keep our fingers crossed.
And good luck on the vote rates.
You know, it doesn't matter, it's gonna be busy every city, every town. All we can do is reinforce that over and over.
Thank you.
And get thick skins. Okay, Doug.
Let's hope we don't have any thick heads.
Yeah. Dog park rules and regulations submitted by Parks and Recreational Director Matt Casperius. Tom Council to consider the proposed rules and regulations for the new dog park located at Wasserman Park as recommended by the Parks and Recreation Committee. Good evening, Matt.
Good evening, everybody. Um, as we move forward with our construction of the park, um, which right now we're still looking at late November, um, for completion, um, I have for your consideration tonight the, the proposed rules to govern the, this new park. Um, we've, we've developed these after looking at other dog parks in the, in and around New Hampshire, around New England. We think these are very reasonable, covers us, you know, the way we need them to be covered. Um, I have talked to, um, a number of other directors, Derry Dover, um, they, you know, dog owners tend to be very good about policing themselves and, and, and everybody I talked to said, you know, they have realistically very few issues. You know, usually every now, once in a while, there'll be somebody they have to kind of talk, have the police talk to or whatever, but it's not, that's more the exception than the rule. So I don't know if anybody has any particular questions about the, the draft that's here in your packet.
Go ahead.
I had two modifications, to be honest with you, Madam Chair. I don't wanna handle it.
Go right ahead.
Okay, thank you. Rule number 10, where it says no female dogs in season parentheses permitted, I would just pick one, either season or heat and have it read are permitted, so no female dogs in heat are permitted or no female dogs in season are permitted.
So either or is what you're suggesting?
Either or, I can, I can go either way. And then, channeling my inner councillor Mayon, number 15, the incident shall not should be reported to the Merrimack Police Department. And that's all I had.
I think the one thing that you're probably going to deal with the next section, you have another, um, agenda item relating, chapter 142. I think it's important and maybe everyone already understands this, but the inclusion of, of dog park into the listing automatically means that those ordinances that are subject to all the parks are now subject to the do, dog park, like no alcoholic beverage.
Correct.
You'll notice that that's not on the list, but because it's, the next item means that the dog park's gonna be involved with the parks, that's already a regulation. Okay? Maybe people already, but I didn't want to assume anything.
Is there a dog park in Wasserman Park?
But they're sight, they're making it probably for clarity.
Yeah.
With anything else?
Thinking what?
For clarity.
Okay.
Would be my assumption and what Matt's saying is accurate. Yes, Jackie?
Yes, um, there's gotta be a little kiosk there.
Yes, there will be.
Yeah, and we could, we should actually, shall, post the, um, park rules plus the, uh, these, so that people can tell what they are like. That's important, that, um, alcohol, for example.
Yeah. I mean, it is part of Wasserman.
Yeah.
But I don't think people would assume, right, so.
Yeah, I did just want to make a comment on, on Bill's thoughtful, you know, the potential changes. Well, I think maybe those two words are used by some people and whoever uses one doesn't use the other, and it might be a good idea to leave them in. I assume that there was a reason to have both words in. And the other, um, thing is, um, the, notice the dog or person must be removed and the incident should be reported. So I think that that's a, probably also thought through.
So what you're saying is you don't like shall or you like should?
I think so in this instance.
Yeah, the one must be removed. Obviously, you have to get rid of the dog that's causing a nuisance, but should you report it to the police? Maybe.
As, as, as a victim of, of dog bites, and I go to the hospital, the hospital's automatically obligated to report the local.
Anytime a dog bites.
Correct.
Yeah, but should is, is enough.
But should doesn't mandate it.
Should, right.
It says you should.
Right, right.
But it doesn't mandate it.
Exactly.
I think it should be mandated.
Oh, okay. Okay.
So should should be shall, which is what I said.
Or must.
I agree with, on that particular case, I agree with Bill. I think the heat season, you're right, I, I mean, I would, to me, it's redundant.
I use heat. I mean, that's.
Yeah, but not, not everybody uses the politically correct term in a season. Okay, and some people don't know that there's a, that is used as that, in that, in that fashion, okay?
But I agree with you with the shall. It makes it obligatory, not a suggestion.
Yep, yep, that's what I thought maybe wasn't necessary.
Oh, okay. You don't, you still don't think it's necessary?
Correct, but that's, that's okay. Different sort of opinion.
If, if it's gonna be shall or must, then, then we have to have a follow-up or else, because otherwise it's just words and, and so what does it mean?
It's too bad Max not here. What would the police department do if there was a? Go ahead, Tom.
I think some of the other towns, if there's repeated incidences, they're banned. Okay? There's nothing in here that does that.
Well, aggressively.
And I don't have any problem, and at this point, I don't have a problem with it, okay? But if you're gonna do, gonna go to that extent, then you need to have, notify the police department because they may say, make me. In which case you call the police department, they can look at records, yeah, you've had two other incidences, you fall under the purview of the, of the, of the, of the, banned, and you're banned, okay? The other question I had when I reviewed these was, some of them require a dog bite to be reported to the Department of Health, to the health department or health officer. Okay, this doesn't do that. It reports, reports it to the police department. So who, because there's always, you hope their rabies tag is up to date.
Right.
They're supposed to have a valid tag. There's not gonna be anybody there checking the tags other than spot checking them at some point probably, right, Matt? Okay, so, you know, um, how you're, you know, or, or they're using somebody else's tag to get them in there. All right, now.
Critical, suspicious.
Well, you know, conspiratorial, you know? Grassy knoll, I mean, all that other stuff, okay?
He used other kids' ta, uh, uh, driver's licenses to get into bars.
Never.
Yeah, projecting is, I.
Never, 'cause my dad told me if I got arrested, you, you should find somebody else to make your one phone call to, not to me.
How would you feel about, uh, part of the process would be, and the Merrimack Police Department will report this information to the health officer?
Well, I think you better check with them.
But something, that would.
It is a health issue. It's a potential health issue. Okay? Because the other thing I raised, the other issue I raised was the, um, retractable dog leashes, because they're thin nylon lines that can cut your arm off or a kid's arm off. Okay? And when you get in that confined area, when you're going into the park before you And when you get in that confined area, when you're going into the park before you release them, and those dogs get going, you can end up with a real scrum in there, and somebody can really get hurt.
That tied up. I know from experience.
Yeah. Okay? And so that's why some of them, you know, Matt, I, I emailed Matt on this and, you know, and I explained why I felt that that was something that was important, but, you know, it's, it's up to the, the council to, to decide on that issue. I just, from my personal view, I think it's an important, it's an important issue.
Yes, Eileen?
Um, I just, I just wanted to say that I really appreciated Tom's approach to this because we were going to take these, take these rules and just put them over to the side, and then we were thinking about putting them into the ordinance itself, chapter 142, and at his suggestion, we.
That's a good idea.
Looked at the rules as a separate document and make reference to them in the, in the ordinance, so they can be modified very easily in, in the future, now or in the future.
Yeah. Yes, Jackie?
Yep. I, I think I have a philosophical problem here, and I don't know the answer, and I don't think I have a, a complete viewpoint of this, but this was a citizens' initiative, and the citizens took over and did a fabulous job in every way, and, you know, and now we have the rules, this is the last part, and we, I could make these rules three pages long. And I think that you, I think that we should either trust dog owners to be, have common sense, and I do, and, you know, I have a retractable leash, for example, and for heaven's sakes, my God, you know, for years, we've been using it, never had had an incident, but, you know, it's just common sense. I worry more frankly about the dogs being wet off the leash as soon as they get out of the car, but, but that's me, and I wouldn't put it in the rules. So I think the philosophical problem is how much common sense do we attribute to the citizens who are going to be using this, and how many rules are we going to write?
Well, I don't, I don't disagree, Jackie.
I don't either.
Okay?
So do you, which, so which one of these do you think is beyond necessity?
None.
You don't think it should be needed at all?
Oh.
Or you agree with these?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah, I have no problem. I couldn't think of any that wouldn't be already covered in the, that I would want written down.
Okay.
And then, as we go along, if there is a problem.
We'll see.
We'll see.
I'm, I'm just, I.
You know, the, the police department, I mean.
Yeah.
You know, keeping a, they'd have to keep a list.
I know, that'd drive them crazy.
Well, I think it's, you know, if, if, if I'm walking on the street and a dog bites me, the police, it should be registered somewhere.
But you will, you will take care of it. You're the one that.
That's what I would think.
So you're saying the victim should register?
Correct.
Yeah.
The victim should register, that is correct.
I think they would, especially if.
I would hope they would.
I would hope they would.
Or make, or make a choice of making a complaint.
But, but there's a reason why it should be shall, because this is an amenity for everybody in the community.
I understand, but they're, but they're not specifying who's going to do the reporting. This doesn't report, specify that.
Which is why.
It just says the incident will be reported.
And sure, the police department keeps a log, keeps a log of everything.
We're saying shall be. That's the debate, I guess.
If there's an aggressive dog in there, and, and it's aggressive enough that the people gathered there say, hey, this dog's got to go get your dog out, what, without the police?
No.
Well, it's, it's all in that.
Only if it was bitten.
Bitten, bitten. In the same sense, it's all in the same sense.
Aggressive or bites.
Okay. Okay, I, then I concur with that, but I still believe the biting should be reported.
There are, there are some dogs, there are many dogs that are not socialized.
Correct.
And when they get in the presence of other dogs, they get aggressive, and they don't care who's in the way, okay? And so, you know, some owners, as you say, have common sense, like, I was, took one of my dogs to PetSmart to have, to have some, something done, and a woman walked in with her dog, and my dog, of course, you know, wanted, wanted to meet the other dog, and she said, no, no, no.
How did it do that?
Was that an exact word?
Didn't see the tail.
Almost. Yeah, I didn't see the tail.
Tail was quite a long.
Anyway.
Was happy.
She said, wait, don't come near. He's not used to other dogs, doesn't like them, and he's aggressive with other dogs.
So likely.
Now, some guys don't do that.
That's true.
Okay? Some owners don't do that. They relish the opportunity for their dog to go after another dog.
I think you're right.
It's pre-meal.
Well, it's, it's for his own entertainment. This is the way, this is the way I see this document. I think these are all, generally speaking, very good.
Yeah.
Covers what we need. I get the long leash thing, because it happened to me, burned the back of my leg, like, really badly, but that aside, what I think we have to do, from our standpoint, is say, this is what is not allowed. Aggressive dogs are not allowed. Beyond that, you're using this, it's kind of an at-your-own-risk kind of thing, because, and that's all that's necessary, we've said this, now, if you get bit by, or your dog gets bit by an aggressive animal, you're going to report that anyhow, I'm pretty confident of that.
So leave it up to the victim.
That's what I think we could do, because this, we're just saying, you can't do this, or if you're going to do this, you have to do that, and, but by forcing that on, I just don't think it's necessary, but Eileen is telling you.
Eileen?
No, I, I agree with you, because what, what you're saying is that it's almost like we're taking responsibility for the person, and what Jackie's saying, the person taking care of themselves. So, in other words, if we don't report, then it all, all of a sudden comes back to us in some liability fashion, so.
So having it shall makes us more comfortable.
Just drop that whole section after, after in the park.
Just drop it, right, I think, just, if you have an aggressive animal, it can't be in the park, and that's, yeah, that's, that's just my thought, and, because like any of this, the way these was in must or shall or any of that, it ultimately, in the end, wouldn't matter to me, I suppose, but I just.
Actually, I'd feel better with that. Aggressive, aggressive dogs are not allowed in the park, period.
Yes, yes.
I'm, I'm okay with that.
My thoughts.
Good one.
That's a first. And Eileen perked up, and I figured I did something wrong.
Because once you, once you mention a bite.
Yes.
I take it to the next level, and so you've got to do something with it. If you don't even mention that, just say aggressiveness, then it goes into the responsibility of the individual. Okay? I'm okay with that. Okay, so could I have a motion?
Go down that.
Can I just? I'm sorry, Tom Candy, sorry, Tom.
I just had two simple questions compared to all this other stuff.
Hopefully we won't.
Number two says handlers are responsible for any injuries caused by their dogs. I don't know if, if, just, owners don't have any responsibility for their dog, if it's how it behaves or whatnot, and I, I guess I'm not sure I want to put something in there, but I just, the question came to my mind, is the handler's responsible, but not necessarily the owner? If you send somebody down to the park with your dog or something like that, they, they're going to sit there and argue, well, that's not my dog, I shouldn't have to pay for medical bills if it bit somebody, and, you know, I can just see a bunch of fighting going on if we try and suggest one way or the other, but.
I think that kind of goes back almost to what Finley was saying, is again, you're, you're mandating who's going to be responsible if something happens, almost like you're putting it back on yourself to make sure that that happens, so don't, don't you think?
Yeah, I, I'm not suggesting that we have to go start adding extra lines, I just thought it was kind of funny when we said specifically handlers, but I.
I'm suggesting take it out.
The whole line? I mean.
I didn't, I don't have a line in front of me, but.
Two. You don't have. Anyway.
Okay.
So I don't really care, I just thought it was interesting when I was reading it. And then the other one is, we talk about dogs being allowed into the small dog area, but we don't say anything about keeping small dogs out of the large dog area, and I guess that doesn't matter, we figure if somebody brings it in there and it gets eaten, that's fine. So that's their problem?
I can just picture that, that helps.
Come on up, and why don't you identify yourself?
Sure.
Yeah, you tilt it down, there you go.
I am Christine La Boy.
Get closer. There you go.
I'm Christine La Boy, I work with Matt on the Parks and Rec and helped on the Dog Park Committee. As you may or may not recall, our little group has held dog park play dates already for two years, successfully, no issues, no police called. So some of the things we do to handle those situations is we work together as owners to collectively assess and whatnot. Currently, at this play group that we hold, we run both small and big dogs. I can have a great Pyrenees, and my little Jack Russell, and she'll rule the roost. So they do play well. Of course, there's always going to be an issue, a first timer, a young puppy, and there is another area we separate. We ask that the owners let us know if there's any new dogs or social issues that they're working on, and we take strides. We work together as owners, much like you guys work together to keep Merrimack safe and running, that's what owners do at a dog park. Always going to be an exception, no matter what, but we work together as a group to resolve any of those issues. So I'm happy to say, and I don't want to jinx myself, two, two years.
Knock on wood.
Two years, and it's been going really well, so just hopefully that nature and nurture we put together there will transpose over to Merrimack, because that's our goal, and that's why we started that program, so that we could prove to yourselves, the town and other towns looking to do this, that it does work, it can work, but it takes people who want to make it work, and that's what we're hoping we can prove here.
Did that answer your question, Tom?
Well, in a roundabout way, I hope.
No, I appreciate the work that you're doing, I don't have any problem with that. Number 13 just says dogs weighing more than 30 pounds, so now we put a very specific and precise limit on, you know.
Yep.
Or not allowed in the small dog area, but don't say anything about what is or isn't allowed in the large dog area.
Right, so they.
And maybe we don't care, but.
Sorry. So, no, the expectation was that it was size-driven, the splits commonly are, in most dog parks are split that way, and there's usually a 25, 30 pound, under that weight goes in one side and they play together, and then anything above that weight go in a larger area to play. Oftentimes, some will cross paths, and that, but that's what they do. We can certainly add that line if you want to put 30 pounds or more in the large dog, that's not a problem, I guess, to dog owners, it just seems like it's, it's already assumed that if it's 30 pounds and under one, it's going to be 30 pounds and other.
Is the, is the separate dog areas different sizes?
It's a small.
Is the small dog area have a smaller area?
In general, so generally, you think of whatever rectangle you come up with, what you can have is two-thirds is designated as a larger area for the bigger dogs than one.
So that's maybe one of the reasons, too. Large dogs would use up most space.
Yeah.
They've got to run and get there faster.
Yeah.
You haven't seen my dog run yet.
Although little dogs can run pretty fast.
Thank you, I hope I helped.
Yes, you did, thanks.
You all, then?
Yeah, that's all I, I just.
Tom, and then Jackie.
Yeah, one last thing to keep in mind, okay? This isn't just for Merrimack dog owners, okay? Because of the conditions that we got for the money we got from that grant, we have to allow anyone in, so not everybody is going to have the same social mores that you would find with a group of people who are from the same community. And so, you know, it's something to keep in the, let's say, you've got to do anything more about it, just keep in mind that, you know, that this is, this is, you know, something that we have to keep and consider at times, and it may, may be the, a bigger source of issues than the local people, because they run to each other in shaws and they run each other in the soccer field than other places in town.
Right.
So, you know, that's, that's all I'm saying, there is a distinction here between this park and the other parks that we see.
Right, right. Jackie?
That's, that's a good point, Tom. I've been thinking about what Tom said, Tom Kay, about handlers. You know, handlers much watch their dog at all times, which is fine. Oh, oh, no, handlers are responsible for any injuries caused, so if you send your 16-year-old who just got his license with the, with your dog, and he bites another dog, he's not going to be the, you know, I think owners.
He's not going to report it to the police, I'll tell you.
You bet. You bet. But it seems to me that no matter if the owner is there with the dog or not, the owner is the one that should be, he's the one insured and so forth. What do you think?
Finley?
Like, for me, for me, it falls back on my commentary on the other piece, I think that ultimately, I don't want anybody injured, I don't want any aggressive dogs, I want everybody to get along perfectly, I believe they will, but in the case where some dog causes injury, it doesn't matter to us.
So it's between the handler and the owner.
Okay.
The person who got bit, just kind of make sure they take care of it.
That's a good point.
So.
Takes a lot off our shoulders, maybe.
I think.
Yeah, I think you're right.
And we can always revisit, I mean, if it's.
Yeah.
Turns into a raging disaster, and I don't think it will, but if it. It's almost redundant, when you look at number one, second sentence, okay?
Right.
It's true, I agree. Okay.
Yeah.
I mean.
Okay.
That should be in bold letters, too, by the way.
Could I have a motion, please? Motion to accept.
Are we moving?
Well, what do we remove?
Well, if I understand it correctly, okay, the only thing I'm aware of is that number 15, aggressive dogs are not allowed in the park, period, the removal of the remainder of that, that's the only change that I have done.
We're not taking out line two, because I agree with Tom Mayhon that that's redundant as it relates to number one.
Do you want to, okay, I didn't know it was a suggestion of removing it entirely.
Well, I'm, I'm, yeah, I think it, I don't, I don't think we need it.
So remove it altogether?
Yes.
Yes.
And renumber the rest of them.
And renumber, there we go. So there'll be.
What about the season? What about the fifth season of the year?
So there'll be 14 points. Based upon those two, do I have a motion?
Are we going to do anything with 10, Bill's suggestion? I don't know, are we just leaving it?
I, I thought we were leaving it.
The consensus was to leave it, so.
We're good. Move to adopt the Merrimack Dog Park Rules and Regulations as amended.
Seconded.
Motion made by Tom Mayhon, seconded by Bill Boy. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Six, zero, zero. Okay, and we've talked a little bit about this.
Ladies.
Nope, we're not done yet, we're not done yet, we have the next one. The town council to consider the proposed changes to chapter 142 Parks and Recreation Areas of the Town Code pursuant to chapter article 155, and this has to do with the inclusion of the dog park into the various descriptions. Do you want to say anything else, Matt?
I'll just point out, you know, as with anything new, we're going to look at this, and over the next couple of months, we're going to see how it works, and if we have to make changes, you know, we will. In terms of this item, we basically have three updates that were recommended for chapter 142. Section one, legislative intent, adding Merrimack Dog Park as an official named park, and then also adding Bishop Field, only because for whatever reason it's not listed, and so we thought, well, we're, kill two birds with one stone. Section 142.9 currently says they have to be on a leash, and so we, we proposed adding the exception of, they can be obviously on, not on a leash inside the dog park.
Yeah.
And then 142 dot 15, dealing with Wasserman Park Beach, again, since we're already changing things, adding the new parking lot at the bottom of the hill as, as a place that people can park, because it's currently not listed.
So while you were doing it, you did those things, too?
Good move.
Yeah, good move, is right. Any questions? No, can I have a motion?
Madam Chair, move that the town council adopt the changes to chapter 142 Parks and Recreation Areas of the Town Code pursuant.
Ordinance. Ordinance. Move it to a public hearing.
I can move it to a public hearing?
Yep, yes.
Okay, move it to a public hearing.
That's right, because it's a change in ordinance, that's right.
Second.
Okay, a motion made by Bill Boy to move it to a public hearing, and seconded by Tom Mayhon. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
None opposed. Six, zero, zero. Excellent. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Ladies, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, direction of two thousand, oh, we're talking about budget already. Two thousand seventeen eighteen budgets, meted by town manager Eileen Cabanel and finance director Paul McCully, to ask the town council to contemplate, to contemplate, budget parameters for two thousand seventeen eighteen budget season, which will be discussed at a future meeting. You have our undivided attention.
Staging the line.
Always.
It's from a lefty.
I love when they call you machines, it's smaller than me.
You're stepping to me all the time. Okay, so we have to get our budget, budget minds working now. I know.
We just closed out a year, we're in the middle of another year and we're moving on to the following year. So as we always do, early on, as we're developing the budget, we like to tell you some of the things that we are aware of, that, that you might want to know about and also to get some direction from you on where the, where you want to go as far as the, you know, setting parameters for us. So some of the things that we do know, and the numbers will be coming up soon, so we're just giving you the words and then we'll give you the numbers after the, after these slides. So we have received a health insurance guaranteed maximum rate of nine point one percent from the health trust. An increase in retirement contributions, they have gone up through the roof as well as we had expected. These are numbers for two years, so this will be for seventeen eighteen and eighteen nineteen. As you can see, the fire department, thirty-one point eight nine percent is, we pay for retirement costs. The employee pays something like nine percent, eleven percent. So forty-some odd percent goes into the retirement for the fire department, almost thirty percent for the police department and everyone else, meaning Paul, myself and, and Public Works employees and all that kind of thing are twelve point one five percent. So, you know, this, obviously this has been compounding and compounding since way back when, when the, when the state started taking out their portion. They used to pay, I think it was thirty-five percent at one point of the town's and the school district's portion for, for the police and fire?
Police and fire.
Police and fire and teachers. So, and then they reduced it and reduced it to, and now it's zero, so.
Well, it's not just, it's not just the state contribution disappearing, it's the fact of the way that they parceled out what the town contributions were going to be in the eighties and nineties.
Yeah.
That really put them, and that helped put them in the hole that they're in.
And not only that, but the, the lax rules that they've had allowing people to, you know, that, that they've since worked out, but, you know, allowing people to use big huge payouts that they get at the end of their day.
And that becomes part of their retirement.
That becomes part of their retirement. Only three years for, you know, for the average, you know, coming up with the average, retiring at age forty-five, minimum for age forty-five for the police and fire, et cetera, et cetera. So, so anyway, they're, they're trying to put rules together, but they're going to catch up, they're trying to, to catch up. They have made a small increase to the employees' share, obviously always in the past, but that hasn't changed. So, for instance, I've been in this business for twenty, for about twenty-five years and it was always five percent that the employees paid for their portion of the retirement system. And the, the police department and fire department, I think that was nine point three percent. And it was that way for twenty years or twenty-two years. It was always the same and the employer's portion, I think back then was in the two percent range. Since then, the employee's portion went up to, from five percent to seven percent and as you can see what's happened to ours. And for the police and fire, they've gone up from nine percent to eleven percent.
Is that all for new employees or is it retroactive to present?
It's everyone.
Because I know in Massachusetts, if you had an increase of eleven, only the new people got eleven.
No.
Okay, it's.
Yeah, but there are.
They changed the dual, look at the dual grouping, the two groupings is, in New Hampshire is they changed the, the method of calculation for retirement. So they dealt with that rather than creating a separate.
A tiered.
Yeah.
Okay.
Would you say group one is, they're paying about eleven percent and.
Group.
Group one is paying how much? Seven percent?
Group one is seven percent. It used to be five percent for twenty-some odd years.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the employee verse, section has gone up, 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 up and the same thing with the police and fire. Just the one, just the one change in all those years. So, so we know the retirement contributions are going to hit us this year and we'll be giving you the numbers shortly. Increase in, in property and liability and not to exceed a number of ten percent. And they're the only game in town now. Primex is the only game in town because the health trust has, or whatever they're called, have gotten out of that business. And, and as many municipalities are going around and looking at private insurers and I personally have cautioned them about that because there are certain immunities that are given to municipalities by statute if you belong to a risk pool that is made up of members of municipalities. So if you, if you go out to a private entity, it's considered, it's for profit and there, there are no immunities. So, you know, you could be, the immunities really help to keep the cost down.
So is Primex a regulated entity because it's the only guy in town?
It's the only guy in town just because it just, they just dumped this.
Is it because it's a not-for-profit and those books are audited and checked that we're, we know we're not getting gouged or, because if they're the only guy.
It just happened. It just, all of a sudden it just happened and no one has come in to fill the other slot.
Primex is reviewed annually by the Secretary of State's office or.
Do they have to justify the increase?
What will happen.
Not necessarily.
What will happen with Primex is if they increase whatever fund balance they have left, this is what got NHMA and Health Trust and LGC before them into trouble is they didn't return the surplus back to the members.
Okay.
So if they gouge us ten, fifteen percent, it comes back, but not ten, fifteen percent back to the town, it's split over everybody who's in the pool.
Right, but and not based on your.
Experience, yes it is. Yes, it is.
Yeah, it's based on your experience.
The refund is as well.
Yes.
Jackie?
I missed how much we contribute, the town, to, to the retirement fund.
To the retirement fund, it's right up there.
It's listed right there.
So for fire, for fire, we contribute thirty-one point eight nine percent of their wages and overtime to the retirement system for the fired employees, twenty-nine point four three percent for, yeah.
How much then, I guess my question should be then, I missed how much the employees contribute?
The fire and police employees contribute eleven percent or so, a little bit over eleven percent and everyone else contributes seven percent.
Okay.
Me and Public Works and all of us regular people. Tom?
Yeah, the workers' compensation increase, those rates were supposed to have gone down this year or next year. So when I see this, it's either the pool had some bad experience or we've had bad experience.
It's just a number that's not to exceed, so we don't have a final number yet. They just said, the latest numbers that they have are they're giving us a not, not to exceed ten percent number. So I don't, I don't believe our experience has increased. I think we have really good experience, although we've had a lot of claims.
This year.
This particular year. It, it should even out over a couple of years.
Takes three years.
Takes three years, yeah.
Yeah. Takes three years to move through the, the table.
So we're not sure about that at this point. But, so we've had, we know that we have five union contracts that are settled, this is the second year of them and there's a cost associated with that. Electric rates, expecting a twenty-five percent increase because we have a long-term contract ending and we've got to go and see what we can get from, as far as rates go by shopping around, Paul does that. Same thing with, well, not natural gas, we do have a contract that ends on eight thirty-one eighteen, so it doesn't affect this year, this upcoming year that we're talking about. No, so no increase for the gas. Okay, so things to consider, the highway garage, do we want to do a bond? And that's, that's a question, doesn't, doesn't want to go on the ballot, but the, as I look at this, I'm thinking to myself, the first payment won't actually be due until eighteen nineteen, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so it's really not, the payment isn't going to be, wouldn't be in this budget, but it's just something that we need to consider as a topic as to whether or not it needs to be a warrant article. The union contract, something else we should keep in mind, the union contract for the police officers, it has already expired, so we're in the process sort of of negotiating another one. They're going to be bringing their proposal to us sometime.
November.
November. So that'll be the first shot across the bow, I guess you'd call it. So as far as state revenues are concerned, we never know where rooms and meals are going to go or the highway block grant. Sometimes the highway block grant, oftentimes they will give you a number, there'll be four allotments of it and they base your tax rate on it and then the last payment, they say, oh, by the way, we're going to take thirty or forty thousand dollars off of that.
Depends on how much they collect on the road toll tax.
Okay. So here's some numbers to associate with the things that I just told you. So the health insurance increase, nine point one guaranteed maximums, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars or eight cents. Property and liability increase, ten percent, fifteen thousand dollars, which doesn't come, it's half a cent. Because our new value is three point three billion dollars, used to be two point nine. New Hampshire retirement increase, two hundred and twenty thousand dollars or seven cents on the tax rate. Workers' comp, ten percent, potentially twenty thousand dollars or one cent, just under one cent. Union contracts, a hundred and sixty thousand dollars for the five unions or five cents. Electricity rate, potentially forty, forty thousand dollars or one cent. The rebate for the streetlights will be a reduction of fifty thousand dollars or negative two cents. Use of fund balance to offset tax rate, that's written down there because if you decide, as you have not indicated this to us, but if you decide to not use another three hundred thousand dollars to reduce the, the tax rate in that year, then the tax rate goes up by three hundred thousand dollars or nine cents. So you have to continue that practice on in order to avoid that coming back in. You look puzzled.
I don't get it.
Okay. So when you, when you use three hundred thousand dollars to offset, set the tax rate, it comes out, as you know, it comes out of fund balance.
Correct.
And that reduces the tax rate. So what I'm saying is that if you don't do that again the next year, it's like adding to your, it's subtracting from your revenue.
Our tax rate is based upon having that three hundred thousand.
It's subtracting from your revenue.
This year. The tax rate that we are going to be discussing is based upon the fact, one of the components was we gave back three hundred thousand dollars. So next year, the following year, you're not putting three hundred thousand dollars, so now that increases the tax rate.
You may or you may not.
Or you can put it in.
You can or you can't.
Or you could put it in if you continue.
But it's just something to think about, so it's, you know.
Right, or there may be other issues that impact the three hundred thousand dollars.
Correct. Right.
In another way.
Yeah, exactly. So that's nine cents and what is that, onion?
Union.
Yeah.
Union.
The police contract, question, question, question mark. So all those things put together come to twenty-nine cents. If you took the fund balance out of there, obviously it's twenty cents. This is, and this is just our initial.
Is it twenty cents, not, not eleven?
Back. Twenty-nine cents minus nine.
Right, I got that, but you're factoring, you're factoring your tax rate on adding the nine cents back in. If you, if you subtract the nine cents out from the.
From the twenty.
I get eleven cents.
No, because, no, what I.
Well, I am double subtracting, that's what I'm thought, that's what I thought you're supposed to do.
No, it's added right now and I'm subtracting it out. We've added it, all those.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
Move on, thank you. It goes to zero. For music, it goes to zero.
Okay.
That was what I was looking for, thank you.
So those are our thoughts as far as that's concerned. So does, do you have any directions for us as far as where you want to be? Or what you would like us to do and, or get to?
Bill?
I mean, I certainly would still want to pursue the practice of reducing the tax rate by three hundred thousand dollars like this council did, so I certainly would want to see that included in the budget for us to consider when we go through the whole, the whole budget process.
Okay, remember also, I guess my only original thought was, that was based upon having a revenue excess this present year.
Just, just one thing, we had one point five million dollars in extras, so that's why if you, if you use three hundred thousand dollars over five years, then.
Correct.
Then it's manageable.
Gotcha, I understand now, okay. I do understand.
All right, and, and, I mean, for, next year, the members on the council might not agree with us, but the conversation we recently had.
That's right.
Was that there's a pile that's larger than most, if not all of this thought was necessary.
Right.
And so that's why, you know, that's available for the following year and it would continue to have.
I remember that now.
If you thought you were starting to get closer to the limits.
Yep. I understand. Finish up and then we'll go back to Bill.
As for me and my thoughts of what I'm looking for, it's been the mantra, the stability of the tax rate. So I'd like to see a budget proposal to us that takes that into account, which I know will because that's what you always do. And I want to know what the town needs, where, where shortfalls might be, things that we should contemplate taking care of and we'll fight around that in our decision making, for me.
Bill?
Just, I actually lost my train of thought. But the, the one other, there was two things, but the other thing I wanted to talk about is if we could have some type of a conversation like we did last year regarding the fire budget. You know, I'm curious to know where we are as it relates to the overtime budget. I'm curious to know what the, how, because we had a protracted conversation last year about that. And I think it's important that.
To reevaluate.
To reevaluate that, I really believe that.
Eileen?
We actually had quite a lengthy discussion about that today at the staff meeting and I spoke to the fire chief about that also because I knew that that would be a topic that was going to be coming up. You know, the addition of the overtime so that we'd have a straight eight group of people, we were going to take a look at that and see if maybe adding four firefighters might have been a more, you know.
A wash.
Yeah, well, not a wash, but it might be a better format.
There's a tipping point.
Right, there may be, but what, what we've been facing this particular year is so far is an enormous amount of overtime because so many people have been out. There have been six people out, sometimes for four, six, seven, eight months for various injuries. And as I said, it's, it's, this particular year is almost impossible to, you know.
Isolate out.
To isolate out because it's so aberrant.
Are the injuries work-related?
Some of them are, some of them aren't.
Which that alone tells you something.
Right.
Our safety policy is delayed.
Well, and also that if there's that many injuries, if statistically there's that many injuries, it's telling you that they need more people to do whatever. Or there, yeah, ergonomics, whatever, there's something.
Well, don't forget the aging of our workforce, correct?
Okay.
Aging of our workforce.
Yeah, okay.
Also, but we are getting some, you know, younger people.
It's like the fire department, all of a sudden, young faces.
But also, which is a trend nationally, there are so many bariatric patients.
Yes.
That people are really hurting their backs and all kinds of things.
Maybe they need to look at equipment to see if they have.
Yeah, they have those big, huge lifts.
Special, because they have special chair things.
Yeah, I don't think they have the chairs, but they have the big, huge lifts with the, you know, canvas thing that holds horses and stuff like that.
Today, the, the fire chief told us that he's got to look at different chairs.
Exactly.
Because some of our, some of his patients are pushing the limits of his weights on his chairs.
Right.
So he's looking at the whole.
So he should come in with that?
Well, he, yeah, I think that, as I said, that's one of the reasons for some of the injuries is because people are throwing their backs up by trying to bring people that are five, six hundred pounds downstairs and things like that. And it's becoming more and more common all around the country.
Bill?
As opposed to waiting until budget season, is it possible that the chief could come before the council to talk about this so that we're up to date with, with the details of what he's, what he's been through this year so that we're better prepared to have a conversation? Because I hate, hate having that entire conversation during a budget season.
Right. If the council wants that, there's really no reason why we couldn't, I suppose. You want to?
Four meetings between now and the start of the budget cycle.
Then fine.
Sure. Sure, I, I don't think he'll be able to tell you anything more than I just told you, but maybe he will.
Okay, maybe we need to give him direction, what information do we want him to provide to us?
What his recommendation is, what his experience has been, yeah.
What, what has the experience been with the increase of the overtime budget versus the four firefighters that, that we were talking about last year? Even though this is, this year, quote unquote, has been aberrant, your voice, Matt and Chair. You know, because of the circumstances, you know, what, what are, what are the challenges now because of, of having people out for three months, four months? What, what has been his challenges? And what are his recommendations?
Unfortunately, when you get the overtime and also increase, I, now, see, Tom, you may be able to answer this, this was your business. The more overtime you do, that also increases your risk.
Of course it does.
When people are working so much overtime. So, you get into a multiplication of difficulty.
This is correct.
Your, your workman's comp premium, because they take two thirds of your overtime as part of their audit of your, the wages paid to their employees, to your employees.
I just would like to say one more time, though, seriously, it has been a very, very unusual.
Well, maybe that's what part of, we need to understand that too, that would be.
I mean, let's, we need to be talking about it now, I don't want to be talking about it in February. I really don't.
Good point.
Sorry.
Don't know.
Getting back to what I used to do, one thing that's apparent, that is crystal clear to me and a lot of other managers in the municipal sector is, when you, was it, two years ago, we had a reduction.
Yes, we did, they've lost.
And a workers' compensation cut, just because our work, our experience was very, very good. And it's one of the few places where employees have a direct impact on the budget. Okay, by, by working safely. And, and, and I agree, you know, I agree, they need to come to us ahead of time. Even if we don't agree with them at the time,
Let's get the information.
We need to know, you know, what's out there and what's going on, because we're getting good at looking around the corner. You know, we're not just looking to the end of the building as much as we used to, we're getting good at looking around the corner and seeing what's, what's likely to come down the road. Because we've, we've fostered that, we've fostered that culture here, that that's what we want them to do. And they've been very good at, at trying to make reasonable assumptions about what's likely to happen. And that helps us out when we're trying to put a budget together, okay? Even if we don't fund things
That's right.
At the level that they, that they would prefer, okay? At least we know that we got the information, and the collective wisdom of the group, based on the information we got, you know, developed what we thought was the, was the direction that we took. Cause that's what we're supposed to do.
That's right.
Okay? So, that's what I'm, that's what I'm looking at, because you mentioned all those housing projects that might go, that might start, okay? Now, the, the, some of those are going to be incremental over time. You know, but at the same time, that produces different pressures on public works. It produces different pressures on the police department. Not so much the fire department because of building codes, but emergency services is different. Okay? So, you know, there's those, there are those particular pieces, you know, that, you know, we, we need to get, we have to be aware of and, and try to be able to make an adjustment to that.
Okay.
So, do you think about beyond this year and your future?
Yeah. You know, because your wheels are always turning on the department organizations and personnel, okay? You're always thinking about, my experience with you, dealing with you, is that you're always, you've always got those things in the back of your mind. And when things start happening, they come to the front of your mind as to, do we really need to go in this direction now? Can we change this? Can we reorganize this department? And again, it's one of those things that we've pushed for over the last eight years, is to take a hard look at those things and to use efficiencies and, and technology where we can, and make those adjustments, and try to reduce the impact on the budget. And for the most part, we've done a pretty good, I think we've done a pretty good job of doing that, okay? As, as, as have you and the department ads in coming in with their proposals. Cause they understand, unlike what used to happen, you know, we don't shoot the messenger. All right? We don't penalize them for being efficient. We don't penalize them for making reasonable suggestions to efficiency and things like that. Where before, oh, you're going to save that much money, phew, twenty percent out of your budget. Okay? Those, those sorts of things. You know, you manage that, from my perspective, you manage that process through that constant review. So, those are, those are the things that I'm always looking for when I get a budget in front of me. What's, what's going on here? How's this, how's this working? You know, I think the infrastructure pieces, we've been very, we've been very diligent about that.
Exactly.
And you've, so have you, so that's, you know, that's, that's another thing that we, that we pride ourselves on being good at. And that, you know, we need to take a look at.
So, do we need any more direction? Do we want to provide any more direction? Any questions?
I guess I, I'd like to have just a philosophical thought, only because I've had previously, and I'm sure some of, some of you have had conversations with constituents in the community regarding the usage of the bonds. And how, when the highway garage, even though it passed, it didn't pass by the required majority, the expression was, well, you still haven't paid off the other two bonds. And I'm just philosophically, is there any benefit to paying off Greens Pond ahead of time to say we've paid off one bond? So that we can assume potentially, should you approve the bond for the highway garage? It's only a half of, I mean, the principal's a half a million dollars. I mean, is, I mean, I'm assuming there's savings with the interest. But I'm just saying, is there any benefit to, to doing that? I guess I'd like to.
I'll tell you one thing I thought of, I'll show you later. It's like when I had a car payment, and I paid it off, I was like, oh, no car payment. Then when I had to pick it up again, I was like, ah! Versus ended one and started one, the pain wasn't as much, but that's the only argument, go ahead.
I think that Paul had pointed out that the Greens Pond bond, and most of, most of the bonds that we do are not callable. So, we can't call them back and resell them unless the bond bank chooses to do that, because they're, they sell big, they, they sell for the whole state, whoever participated in that.
What does callable mean, pay early?
Callable means it can be, it can come back and you can sell it, you can sell it at a lesser interest rate.
Cause this is at four percent or lower now.
Well, I thought he was just suggesting paying.
Pay it off.
No, but I was just, I was just saying, so no, you can't, callable means if they're not callable, then you have to pay it. So, you, we have one last payment in this upcoming year, which is two hundred and seventy thousand dollars, which I believe is only the principal. So, two, there'll be a two hundred and seventy thousand dollar hole in the following year. So, not in the one that we're talking, year that we're talking about, the year after. So, if you decided to do a bond in the year two thousand eighteen, nineteen, there would be room to do at, at least two hundred and seventy thousand dollars, there'd be a hole, because that one would be gone. So, it would be a good time, because if the bond were issued in two, in this upcoming year, seventeen, eighteen, then the first payment would come due in eighteen, nineteen. So, it, it all kind of fits in. And two hundred and seventy thousand dollars, if you were to do, as Paul pointed out, if you were to do a three point three million dollar DPW facility, as we were talking about before, the first payment would be, which is always the highest, is, would be around two hundred and fifty thousand, including principal and interest, for fifteen years. So, so it doesn't, it doesn't cause a spike, if that answers your question at all. Yeah.
Okay.
Doesn't, but he's willing to accept it.
Okay, so in terms of the fire, we'll just arrange that.
Yeah, the, the fire chief is going to come in at the next meeting, actually, to talk about, to talk about the solar. And so, maybe we could, if he's prepared, maybe we could add that to the agenda for that.
He's going to be coming in next, related to concerns about fire problems with solar panels.
Installations.
And he had mentioned it.
And some code changes.
And I thought it was good for the public to know that, so I've asked him to come in so that.
No, we're going to be better off keeping those topics separate, I think.
I agree.
Right, and Paul just said he,
We're keeping them separate, that's why.
No, okay, but Paul was just saying he doubts that the, the chief would be prepared, cause we just have a week.
Oh, that's right, too. We are keeping those two issues separate. One was the fire, and the other was the exemption.
So, we'll get him in here as soon as possible, Bill.
He needs his conversation about budget and,
We'll get him in here as soon as we can, Bill. He's ignoring me.
Not, not the, not the exemption and the fire issue, you know, whatever the chief wants to talk about.
Bill and Coats is going to be on the third, on the seventeenth, comes in to talk about the budget.
Yeah, okay.
The issues.
Right, okay, I understand now. Maybe I just made the assumption it would be, so, okay.
All right.
Any other questions about the budget?
He'll, he's coming in next Thursday, next Thursday's, next Thursday's the next council meeting, he'll be here to talk about the solar.
Okay. Yeah, that's what I thought.
He'll be here next Thursday to talk about the solar issues.
The fire concerns related to the solar issues.
So, not for the health, so.
He won't be, he won't be prepared to talk about his overtime by next week.
Oh, yeah, no, I got you, no, he's not going, he's going to be here for that. We talked to him today.
Okay. Are there any other directions, or? I agree with Finley, I think it's just a matter of, I have trust in what you've done in the past. And we have an overall view of what kinds of adjustment was going to have to make as it relates to what you presented tonight, and I'm sure other things too. So, you know, try to control it as much as we can. I mean, I've always had faith in you.
Yes.
Okay, so, is that sufficient? Okay. Okay, review of two thousand seventeen, eighteen budget schedule, this is just an FYI, by the way. Take this out and put it on your calendars.
Yep, we're in budget season already. Looking at January two thousand seventeen, we broke out three meetings, but we proposed to start on January ninth, Monday, January ninth, with fire, code enforcement, communications, police, and police detail. And then, that, that following Thursday, the twelfth, would be a regular council meeting. We'd go Monday the nineteenth, Monday, not Monday nineteenth. Monday the sixteenth is Martin Luther King Day. And, and, and past, we have not held a meeting on that day. And then we go back on the nineteenth, which would be the next Thursday, would be welfare and highway, DPW and Parks and Rec. And then following Monday would be the rest of the budget, which would be library assessing town clerk. And general government, bonds and revenue, the twenty sixth would be a regular meeting. The thirtieth, which is a Monday night, would be finalization of the operating budget in a snow day. We have some other days that we built in, if, if we get more snow, we can condense the schedule a little more with, with the departments.
I'm tired already.
Yeah, so we're proposing, we're trying to keep the meetings in January as limited as possible. You know, as few as possible, not as well, but as few as possible for the council. Cause they have other meetings to attend during that month also. Planning toward zoning, conservation commission.
Any questions from the council? Okay, okay. Okay, um, next review, excuse me, of the municipal tax rate. Town council to receive an update of the two thousand sixteen tax rate.
This is cruel, you know. This is cruel, waiting till nine thirty to talk about this. I'm only kidding. I know it is, but.
Thank you.
As, as you know, we just recently had, or in, are in the process of getting our municipal, our entire tax rate approved and authorized by the Department of Revenue. So, when we originally do the, the meetings with the deliberative session, et cetera, they're based on presumptions about revenues and that kind of thing, and sometimes that changes. And as did the value of the town, so it changes the tax rate significantly. So, the municipal tax rate for, and I'm only going to talk about the town, is four dollars and ninety one cents. It was last year, five dollars and forty nine cents. So, it's a fifty eight cent decrease from last year, which is ten point five, six percent of a difference. Part, the, the major part of the difference is because our assessed value went up so much. It went up by over three hundred thousand, three hundred million.
Three hundred thirty five million.
Three hundred and thirty five million dollars, which is something that you can actually expect, because when we did the last revale, it was in two thousand eleven, and the, you know, the numbers were, the numbers were very bad, and now they're coming around to being right about where, you know, you might expect them to be. So, we, I think when I first got here, about five years ago, we were at three point two billion. And then it took a, a drop because of the, the market just dropped. And then, now we're back up again. So, we wanted to talk a little bit about how we got to the four ninety one, based on where we were when we came, went to the meeting with the deliberative session, and the people voted on the budget. So, in two thousand and fifteen, as we just said, the tax rate was five dollars and forty nine cents for the town. We had anticipated an increase of nine cents for a total of five dollars and fifty eight cents. Since then, the, the new assessed value has decreased the tax rate for the town only by fifty five cents. So, you can see that's an increase of three, three hundred and thirty five million dollars, which decreases the tax rate by fifty five cents. And I think people should recognize that even though their values have gone up, the tax rate goes down.
That's what I was just trying to figure out. Exactly that, because let's say you had a house that was two hundred thousand. Just, it was assessed for two hundred thousand, and the tax rate used to be five forty nine. And what, what do you do? You don't multiply that.
No, what you do is you take, the way you, you, you have to take the whole tax rate. So, we're just talking about the municipal portion, I just want to make sure that we're clear. But, so what you do is you take the value of your home.
Right.
Let's say it's two hundred thousand dollars. Take off three zeros, because it's the, the tax rate per thousand. So, you take two hundred dollars times five forty nine, and that would tell you what your tax rate for the town is. And the same with, with the other. Your new value, cut off the three zeros, or move the decimal point over three places for the, for the numbers, because it's the tax rate per thousand. And then multiply it times four ninety one, and that will tell you how much your bill will be for the town. I just want to stress that for the town.
But the, the two hundred thousand would now be, let's say, two, two hundred and thirty thousand, because the assessment's up, right?
Yes, yeah, so we've done, we've done a slide going forward on that, that kind of shows it as well, yeah.
So, let's say it's two thirty times four ninety one. So let's say it's 230 times 491. So in that particular scenario, you went up 30 bucks.
Right, but
But, I mean, and that's just
Yeah, and that's
Which is, which is only municipal.
Right.
And that's with your assessment going up, but the tax rate's gone down. So essentially, it's the same.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Which is, which is what I wanted to exemplify.
Yes, and we do that, we do that going forward a little bit, so
Right, but, but for the public.
It's actually a decrease
Because you keep on saying that.
In, in
Even more so.
In general.
Okay.
So, so anyway, as I said, the, the new assessed value decreases the tax rate by 55 cents for the town. You decided to use fund balance, $300,000 of fund balance since that, when the people voted on it, so that reduces the tax rate by another nine cents. And then we just found out that the rooms and meals taxes revenue were going to come in at $92,000 more, which decreases the tax rate by three cents. So instead of being at 558, we're actually going to be at 491. Obviously, the biggest part of that is the assessed value. So here's an, here's an average house. In 2015, the average house was 200, 234,700.
I'm sorry.
And
I was obviously too focused.
So if you move, as I said, if you move the decimal point over three places to the left on the average house value and multiply it times 549, your tax bill for the town comes, is, comes to 1289. Then what Paul did was he took that $234,000
Perfect.
and he multiplied that times the percentage of increase that we have been seeing, which is around 10% or 11%. So, so anyway, so he, he bumped that number up and multiplied it times 491, so this particular person's tax bill for the town would be 1268, or a decrease of $20 for the year for them.
It certainly tells me that great minds think alike, that's all.
Yes, you got it.
She didn't look ahead.
She didn't even look ahead.
Yeah, a little too fast.
I wish they didn't.
Yeah, good thing you didn't look ahead.
That's right, yeah.
Yeah, I might not have appreciated it as much. Perfect.
Okay. So is there anything else?
But I think that, that's the part I wanted to reemphasize.
Yeah.
Because, and again, only saying it's for the town, and that's what we have to keep on saying, too. But all the people are so concerned that their taxes were going up, the total amount that they pay, and that's not necessarily true, so.
Okay.
DRA has set the tax rate.
Department of Revenue.
Department of Revenue Administration has set the tax rate. I have included in the packet, in the spreadsheet, what is going to be included, what we've talked about last meeting. This is what's going to be included with the actual numbers for the insert to the tax And they have set the tax rate for the town at $22.79 for 2016.
So that's a decrease of 58 cents for the town municipal portion and a decrease, you have to add the two, the school and the two school components, one 25 decrease, a dollar 25 decrease for the school and a 10 cent decrease for the county, for a total decrease of $1.93. So the tax rate was 2472, and it will be going down to 2279.
Any questions for Eileen or Paul? Anything else you want to add, or you're all set? Okay, excellent. Now let's get on to minutes of October 13th.
Madam Chair, move the October 13th, 2016 minutes as presented.
Motion made by Bill Boyd, second by Tom Mahan. Any discussion, corrections, or anything?
I had one.
Tom?
On page 21 of 22, I think, and line 44, it was talking about dropping from a minus 2% grade to a minus two, uh, excuse me, a minus 1.5%, not a minus 1.25%.
Okay.
That, that was discussed in the planning board meeting, so
Okay.
Just a small difference between a one, minus one and a quarter to minus one and a half.
Okay. Any others that you can, anyone? Okay. All those in favor of that motion with that correction, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. 6-0-0. Comments from the press? None. From the public? There is none. Comments from the council?
Of course.
Oh, yes. Go ahead, Finley.
Last night at 9:05, after 35 hours and 35 minutes
Oof!
little Finley Jackson-Roth house came into our world.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
So awesome, so
And everyone's well?
Everyone's well. Amazingly, after all that, yeah. Definitely exhausted.
How big was he?
He was eight pounds, four ounces, 20 inches tall, and
All these boys.
Yes.
Was he playing the trumpet when he came out?
I feel like I'm a David Yakubov in reverse. Although I'm, I've got a long ways to go to catch that number, so
Yeah.
But, now what an exciting time. Everybody's doing great. They'll be back home tomorrow, and
What an amazing house.
And I, I told
Bop out.
Yeah, it's, I told my son that he's ready to experience the most incredible time of his life. It's, it's the best.
Congratulations.
Actually, second best. The grandparent part is best, absolutely.
Yeah, it's true.
So anyhow.
All the joys, not none of the pain.
Yeah.
Or aggravation, it's true. Well, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Best, best to everyone. Okay, well, we have
Good with all those girls, Bill.
Now, we, it's going to be shot week, we are going to have a meeting next week, so I'm going to have to go to town hall tomorrow for another agenda meeting, apparently. Okay. Yeah. Okay, very good.
Motion ordered, Jerry.
Motion ordered by Bill Boyd, second by Tom Mahan. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. 6-0-0. Good evening, everyone.